Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the second 2019 budget hearing for the city of Rapid City on Tuesday, August 28th. I'd like to start this meeting with a roll call and determination of quorum, please, Heidi.
Solomon.
Here.
Modrick. Nordstrom. Drew. Scott. Drury. Laurenti. Roberts. Armstrong. Lewis. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Heidi. Now, I would like to invite everyone to join us for the pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Next on the agenda is general public comment. I'd like to remind everyone that we have lights up here that Alderwoman Drury will be running. You have about three minutes. When you see the green light, you can continue. When you see the yellow light, you have about 30 seconds. You should think about wrapping it up. When you see red, if you don't wrap it up very quickly, I'll be interrupting you. So, see if we can keep the comments going. All right, to start with a public comment or general public comment, the first one I have is concerning building permit fees, Mr. Dean Hedrick. And as you approach the podium, if you could state your name and your address in the city or your city affiliation, that would be appreciated.
Thank you very much. I had introduced myself to you all previously. My name is Dean Hedrick. I am the president of the Black Hills Home Builders Association, the general manager of Holt Homes, and a resident of Rapid City. We want to just make sure that everybody on the council is perfectly clear that the Black Hills Home Builders Association is adamantly against raising, restructuring, manipulating, building permit fees on a department that is already overfunded by those fees. Affordable housing is moving out of Rapid City. With the Black Hills MLS Board of Realtors, the Realtors on board with that have joined us and given me statistics that in the last five years, conservatively, there has been over $50 million worth of residential new construction revenue that went to Somerset and Box Elder, and property tax revenue that does not stay in Rapid City because of that. Because it is easier, it is more affordable to build in those areas, and it's just a lot better for the home builders. Obviously, the general contractors are going to pass these costs. If there are increases, we pass them on to our consumer, to the end user, to the client. And we're taking away affordable housing by doing that. It's becoming less and less affordable to build a house in Rapid City. We're seeing a great influx in Box Elder, Somerset, Piedmont, getting outside of the city. And please take that into consideration as you look at this, because it's not simply a $200,000 increase on a $104 million budget. It is funding a department that is already overfunded by those fees. There is no need for restructuring it, because the current structure is indexed with inflation. And I just want you to make sure you take a look at all the sides of it before you reach a final decision. But please know the home builders is and will be adamantly against that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I have no other general public comment speaker request forms on the building permit fees. I will move on now to general public comment on funding the arts. The first speaker request form I have is for Ellen Shirley. Please state your name and your address and affiliation to the city, please.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Shirley. My address is 2324 Huntington Place here in Rapid. I have no affiliation with the city other than living here. My family and I moved to Rapid two years ago. My husband started at Black Hills Energy then. I have two sons here in the city. When I told my parents that we were moving to South Dakota, my mother had great reservations on the arts in South Dakota. And it took about a year for us to get settled into the community. But last summer, my then 15-year-old son and I joined the municipal band, the Rapid City Municipal Band. In the fall, I became one of the conductors for the Rapid City Children's Chorus. I conduct the choral years. And then in the winter, I joined the Black Hills Chamber Music Society, and I am a board member on that society. My husband and I are quality of life contributors to the arts. We attend the symphony. We attend the chamber music concerts, the Chamber Music Festival. And when I have told my mother all the things that we do, she regrets not having retired in Rapid City. I am asking that we continue the funding so that it continues to be a place where my husband and I will want to retire. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker request is Mr. Tim Shirley.
Evening. Tim Shirley, also 2324 Huntington Place in Rapid City. And just want to add my voice to the support for the arts in Rapid City. My wife mentioned we moved here a couple of years ago, and we've lived, we counted up, this is our eighth move. And we've lived in large cities too, including Cleveland, San Antonio, Charlotte, et cetera. So, had a chance to experience lots of different cities, lots of different kinds of places to live. And one of the things that struck me immediately upon coming to Rapid City was the fact that Rapid had such a vibrant art scene for the size of a town it was. It was just stunning to me. And also in human resources as well too, and we know that that makes a huge difference, because people have choices of where they work. People have choices of where they choose to live. And we are competing for talent with places like Denver, Minneapolis, you know, other large places, because people are looking for, not necessarily looking for a big city, looking for a certain set of experiences. And where they find those experiences, that's where they want to be. Where they don't find those experiences, they choose to be somewhere else. So, just from the pure economic development standpoint, just like investing in the new arena, you know, there are certain things that tend to make our community more attractive for talent, which of course builds our economic base, builds our development as a town. So, I strongly urge us to consider this as one more investment in the future of Rapid City as a place to live and as a place to attract talent. So, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Also on the Allied Arts Fund, Gina Pluster.
My name is Gina Pluster. I live at 1149 Lookout Lane in Rapid City, and I have no affiliation with the city government or anything. And I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Dakota Choral Union, Rapid City's Community Choir, which is supported by the Allied Arts Fund. The Dakota Choral Union is a non-audition group of members of singers that come together every Monday night from September through May to bring major choral works to the Black Hills region. Our mission statement states, "Sharing the passion of singing. Dakota Choral Union entertains, enlightens, and enriches our Black Hills community through the performance of significant choral works. We strive to bridge boundaries and touch lives through our music, a mission that supports Rapid City's ordinance code 2.84, the Municipal Orchestra Concert Band, Marching Band, and Choral Club ordinance." As a new board member, I'm just learning how the budget works for DCU and all the costs involved. We heavily rely on the generosity of our community to operate. Our rehearsal space is donated. Our board members, members and supporters of DCU volunteer time and resources to sell tickets, recruit new members, and organize our annual Tables D'Ur fundraiser. Since its beginning, DCU requires members to pay an annual due to mitigate the cost of venue rentals, advertising, conductoring, accompanist salaries, instrumentalist fees, and music scores, all of which increase in cost every year. Without funding and support from the Allied Arts Fund, we would struggle to maintain the high-level performances our audiences have come to expect. Annual fees from our members would need to increase significantly from the current $50 per year, which is already a struggle for some of our members as they are on a fixed income or just starting out after college and have a limited budget. And we would likely lose many of our singers. Support and advocacy from the Allied Arts Fund allows DCU to focus on making music rather than hunting for money to stay afloat. And we do all we can to give back of the three concerts for this year's season, two are free to the public, our upcoming Veterans Day tribute at the Civic Center, and then our annual Christmas at the Cathedral concert, all free to the public. Our audition chamber group, Cantorai, performs at other community events upon request. We sang here last year for the opening of one of your meetings. And we usually do it unpaid or by a freewill donation. So, we still want to make Rapid City proud and really would love to have your support and make arts a priority in Rapid City. I moved here after 14 years in Chicago and choose to stay here because of the richness of the quality of life. And art, culture, and music is a huge part of that. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. And the final speaker request form I have is also on funding for the arts, and it's Mr. Bill Casper.
Thank you. My name is Bill Casper. I live at 210 San Marco Boulevard. The only association I have with the city is through Facebook. I think most of you know that I started a project last year called the Veterans Honor Banner Project. I was a real neophyte, didn't really know what I was doing, but decided to go ahead anyway. And along the line of getting sponsors for the project, all of a sudden, somebody wanted to make a donation and asked me about my 501(c)(3). I wasn't even sure what a 501(c)(3) was. I wasn't even sure if it was a 501(c)(3) or a 503(c)(1) or whatever. But I thought I'd better get one if I wanted some donations. And I went to the Allied Arts Fund, and Gigi Loggi was kind enough to sponsor us with a 501(c)(3). And I think without that, we would have probably stalled along the way. As it was, we're now getting donations and taking those in. And I just think that Allied Arts Fund, especially in all arts, needs all the funding we can get. To me, art is life. Everything from the Fiddles and Friends concert the other night, nothing against Cool Deadwood Nights, but we were a raucous crowd at the Historic Theater, to the Thursday night concerts in the square, to everything that goes on Art Alley. I've been here since 1960 and watched the city grow. And I can't even imagine what life would be like here without the fine projects we have now. So, I'm really encouraging you to really take a look at the funding for the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. I currently have no other speaker request forms. Am I missing anyone? Seeing none, general public comment is now closed. We'll move on to tonight's agenda. The very first item is a discussion concerning the detox. And we had invited Sheriff Kevin Tome and also Commissioner Chair Lloyd LaCroix. So, if you, oh, and I see Chief Jegras is also in the audience, so if you three want to go ahead and approach the podium, are you prepared just to answer questions, or do you have some information and some background information for us?
Yeah, thank you. Kevin Tome, Sheriff Pennington County, and I do have a couple of handouts. And if I could just reference those and explain them briefly, then we'd certainly stand for any questions. And hopefully between the three of us, we can answer all of the questions. The first sheet I'll reference is one that looks like this. It's a budget sheet. It's the budget sheet we use with the county commission when we present our budgets. This is a budget we presented to the county commission, which they've approved, the county side of this and the budget as you see it today. And I'll certainly answer questions on that. We understand budgets are tight for everybody, so we're sensitive to that. We've always tried to be good stewards of the program. And then the other page I want to just quickly reference is, I call it kind of a data summary sheet. And it really lays out the utilization. So, if you look at first, on the very top, it's probably hard to read, but over the last five years, out of four of the five years, we've rebated money back to the city. One year, we had to do an additional assessment. That was in '16 for $14,000. So, over the last five years, we returned about $70,000 almost of unused tax dollars. Then if you go down to detox, what we call safe beds or safe solutions, and look at utilization, the police department, and then what we call self-admissions, those that walk into the facility from here in town, you know, account for somewhere in the mid-80s, 83% in 2017, 86% so far this year in terms of utilization by people within the city. And if you go down to what we call safe beds, which is a program we started a few years ago based on a model from Haven for Hope in San Antonio, Texas, the utilization runs in the 90s. And I'm going to qualify this upfront and say, I put this together kind of on the fly this afternoon. So, these numbers could move around a little bit if I come back and refine them, but I don't think dramatically. I'm talking, you know, 5%, 10%, you know, tops. But we did it kind of quickly today, and so we'd have something to talk about. Then if you go down to the Care Campus building, which is where these programs are housed, you know, the county put in a little over 13 million. The city put in about $900,000. The chief and I went to CIP committee, and they funded $900,000 towards a project at that time, a couple of years ago. Then on the very bottom, it talks about what's going to be at the Care Campus. And this drives part of the increase in cost. The detox beds are going from 26 to 40. And what we call safe beds or safe solutions, we currently have seven beds, and it's for males only. When it gets cold out, we've pushed that to 12 and thrown some more mattresses on the floor. But that'll go to 42 safe beds, and that's a combination of male, female, about two-thirds male, a third female. Then the treatment beds, which will currently stay at La Crosse Street until we can finish off the balance of the second floor through a generous donation we received from an individual here in town. And that'll eventually move down to the Care Campus as well. And then eight crisis care beds. So, crisis care is currently run by Behavior Management Systems up on North Street. That's coming into the facility, creating what we call a single point of entry. So, we have crisis care, safe solutions, detox, and eventually our residential treatment programs, all under one roof. And we think we gain tremendous efficiencies by doing that. And so, the county has a big investment in this, and there's a win in it for the county, not just for the city. But, you know, it's a jail diversion for us. Fewer people going to the jail into programs like this. It's a win for the county. It's less state's attorney time, prosecutor time. It's less public defender in some cases, city attorney time in prosecuting cases. It saves the courts time, because we've got some of these low-level offenders, really are chronic frequent flyers, if you want to call them, that churn through our system and burn an inordinate amount of resources that we're trying to deal with in a more efficient way. So, that's a little overview. And I know it's a dramatic jump this year. Part of it is, last year in the budget, we actually wrote in $700,000 for the city and county budget. At the end of the day, you ended up funding it at $611,000. And that was through our conversations with the chief, and we thought we would be able to meet that number. What's happened is, you know, a lot of our business, the jail, the juvenile service center, detox, is funded by other revenues, federal revenues, state revenues, self-pay. We try and run it like a business. Well, we missed our estimate on our federal revenue. We went from a high of over $0.5 million about three years ago to 2019, we'll be somewhere in about $32,000 is what we're projecting. And that's just a change in practice where they've gone to a lot of outpatient services as opposed to residential services. So, you cut staff to the point that you can, but eventually you lose some economies of scale. So, that's also what's impacting it. So, the change in, I guess, how people are doing treatment services, the increase in service and the scope of the programs we're doing are both driving that number. And, you know, the total detox budget as proposed in 2019 is almost $3.8 million. About 1.5 of that is funded by taxpayer support, half from the city, half from the county. So, if you want to impact that number, you just got to remember the detox budget's unique. So, if you say, "We want to cut $200,000 out of the 1.5," well, you get 50 cents for every dollar you cut, because half of it's the county's, half of it's the city's. So, if you want to take it from 1.5 to 1.4, that's $50,000 city, $50,000 county. So, it's a unique budget. It gets complicated when you start trying to increase/decrease based on that formula. But I'll defer to our commission chair and to the chief, and then certainly stand for any questions.
I just, Lloyd LaCroix, Rapid City Pennington County Commission. I'll stand for any questions. I've got a lot of, I know a lot of the history between the city and county alcohol and drug programs. If you're looking for the numbers, these two gentlemen behind me have worked hard together over the past few years to get you to where we are today, along with other past police chiefs and past sheriffs. So, it's been a partnership for many, many, many years, and they've worked together to get where we are today. So, if you have any questions on the history or some of the programs, I'd be more than willing to help you answer those.
Chief, do you have any initial comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to share that basically, this expansion of detox services has been in the making for at least a couple of years, but in need for closer to a decade. And the resources have not been meeting the demands of our community. And therefore, we have had to make difficult decisions out on the streets as the 24/7 caretakers of those that are most vulnerable in our community. And we've done in-the-street triage, and we've, out of necessity, had to put our vulnerable population at greater risk than they really need to be. So, I just want to commend the sheriff's office for taking on the responsibility of running our detox facility. That isn't how it's operated in most places. We obviously have a need, and I believe that as the new facility opens, we're going to have a lot more self-reporting of our chronic inebriants. And that is going to reduce the degree of conflict, especially in our downtown core and our park area. And importantly, for me at the police department and for our fire chief, it's going to reduce the burden of those calls for service on both the police and fire department.
Thank you. And thank you, gentlemen, for standing for questions. Chair would like to recognize Alderwoman Drew.
Also, I'd like to echo, thank you for being here. I think that everyone in the room can kind of sense that we have to make some really tough decisions as a council when we're weighing what we will fund and, you know, the importance of certain services or amenities. And I'm on both sides of this. And, you know, I'm kind of going to get into the weeds, but that's what this is for. So, I'm going to ask some questions about the budget. You asked for a 23% increase, which, you know, I'm partial to grant, but I kind of need some information on why we should go ahead with this when we're asking other people or take less money, okay? So, when I'm looking at your budget here, I see that you have an 11% increase in your salaries. Is that extra hires? Is that what you're doing, because you'll have more people?
If you ever may.
Yes, please.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
If you look at the bottom of the budget sheet, if you look at the number of FTEs, you can see the increase that corresponds from '18 to '19, from 44 to 52 FTEs. So, that would drive part of it, and also whatever the county salary policy is, because our county employees would drive that as well.
Okay. And then, as you said earlier, some of these are funded by grants as well, so we're not really paying for all those FTEs? Could you clarify that?
Yes, you may.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's correct. You've heard a lot about the MacArthur Foundation Grant, the Safety and Justice Challenge. And so, that's helped offset some of the increase with these programs. Without those grants, the numbers would have been significantly higher.
Sheriff Tom, I'm just going to direct all the questions to you. And so, when we go down here, I'm looking at contract services. That's up 40%, if I'm reading that correctly. Can you define what that means? What are the contract services? Who you're working with? What is that about?
Any of our service contracts. That could be from contracts with our copy machine, to cleaning, to medical supplies, to any things we need to do to do our business throughout the day.
So, you're not talking about contracting mental health counselors or any of those kinds of things? This is just kind of the office supplies and things of that nature?
It wouldn't be office supplies. That would be under supplies.
Okay, excuse me.
Again, just any of the contractual services that we do in addition to our services. And we don't do mental health services as part of detox. Now, it's unique in our new arrangement at the Care Campus where Behavior Management Systems will have the Crisis Care Center there. So, they will actually fund the mental health component of what we call QMHPs, Qualified Mental Health Professionals. Ours is substance abuse.
Okay. And then I'm also seeing a big increase in your utility line item here. Is that just because of more space, more offices, is that what, that is just anticipating those higher bills?
It's driven by two things. We're going from about 25,000 feet at La Crosse Street to almost 70,000 square feet in the new facility. And the other thing is, for at least probably the first six months of next year, we're going to be running two facilities. La Crosse Street will still be open. Care Campus will be open until we get second floor finished and consolidate the two facilities. Then we should realize some savings.
So, will we can probably see a decrease in that item next year or the year after?
I'd hate to make that promise, but I hope so.
I understand. So, we have some savings in other departments too, when you're talking about, when Chief Jegras was talking about savings to the police department and fire department, those kinds of things. So, that's great to hear. Also, on this second sheet here, where you're going through like just a data analysis, on your Care Campus, I saw the safe beds capacity increased from seven males only to 42. I don't understand that, what that means. Seven male beds to 42 beds, what is?
Right now, we have a capacity of seven beds. Think of it as a seven-room hotel. We have seven beds, and all it is is a blue mattress, like a jail mattress, these canvas or plastic mattresses we use like in an institutional setting. We have seven of those in a room up at the La Crosse Street facility now. So, now we're going to have 42 of those mattresses. We have obviously more square footage. Would be 42 of those mattresses on the floor, and we'll have an area for males and for females, if we don't accommodate females now.
And how many do you think you will designate for female use?
It's about a two-third, one-third split. I don't remember the exact math.
Okay.
I think it's like, whatever that works out, two-thirds, one-third roughly.
And we're looking at the Care Campus and where people come from, where they self-check in. And are these generally people that cannot stay at the cornerstone? Is that the population we're looking at? Or people that would otherwise end up on the street?
We only take those that are intoxicated. So, if you're not intoxicated, that's the purpose of the cornerstone. If you're intoxicated, cornerstone generally won't take you, although they make exceptions to that when it's extremely cold out. to that when it's extremely cold out. And I spend the board for the Cornerstone Rescue Mission, so I wear two hats. But we'll make exceptions to that when it's extremely cold, so people don't freeze to death. But otherwise, we're dealing with a chronic inebriant population. They deal with the sober population, if you will.
Well, I just commend you for your, all your work on this because I think it's really important for our community to take care of our most vulnerable populations. And thank you for your patience in answering my questions. I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair would like to recognize Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for being here tonight, and I appreciate the Alderwoman bringing this one forward because I have a few questions as well. I support it on its face, and obviously, I think all of us support providing these types of rehabilitative services, if you will. There's other parts of it as well that aren't necessarily rehab. But my question to you is, in the discussion of expanding these services, is there conversation in both you, Sheriff Tome, and Chief, if you can both talk about this, I would greatly appreciate that? Is the expansion of services that maybe we don't have, how does that drive the need for it? Has that been discussed? Do we actually grow the population of people who need these types of services that don't live here now, necess, you know, possibly, that will come here because of the expanded services, the new services that weren't provided before? If that was discussed, and then I have a couple of questions after that, if you would. Thank you.
Sure. I'll just say that my experience is that transient population, those that come and go from our community, is a very, very insignificant portion of the services we provide. These are primarily residents of our community or our neighboring tribal communities. And the alternative oftentimes is the Pennington County Jail, which is very expensive for all of our taxpayers. However, it's easier to disguise the expense or for the expense to be unnoticed because when we increase our capacity of criminal justice intervention, it relies on multiple taxing bodies to pay the expense, the state, the county, the city, all of which have federal subsidies. And so, we have four entities that are used to increase all segments of the criminal justice system. So, I think this is just a very common sense decision to expand low-level services so that we can, at the end of the day, be much more efficient and, more importantly, more effective for those that need these services.
Thank you. And I just want to, I want to ask a follow-on, which Sheriff Tome, you can expand on that as well, if you would. But my, after your comments, Chief, and I appreciate that. To me, I guess the thing that still, not necessarily bothers me, but what I'm thinking about is, in the discussion of putting this together, to spend this money, which is a large investment, because we're, depending on, if my information is right, we have grant funds that at some point are going to run out, run out, correct? So, if you can also visit that, because at some point, then county budgets and city budgets are going to have to continue the operations after the grant funds are long gone, or if there was discussion on that as well.
Sure. I'll take both of those, if I can take that one first. The, in terms of, you know, grant funding, whether it's philanthropy dollars or from federal government or state government or some other government body, that's always a push-pull. And at the end of the day, when grant dollars run out, you know, either lay off staff and reduce services, or you come back to the governing bodies and ask for additional tax support to support the programs. And we've done it both ways over, you know, my career in law enforcement. Sometimes programs sunset because they're no longer needed, or there's not support to go back and ask for the additional tax dollars. So, in the meantime, I guess the approach we've taken is, let's take advantage of the additional services for our community while we can, realizing at some point, they may sunset and go away. In terms of what I call "build it and they will come" in this facility, we've had that same discussion at the Cornerstone Rescue Mission, the board I sit on. I'm not speaking for the mission, but I can tell you an issue or question I've raised, both with this facility and at Cornerstone Board meetings, is, you know, where is that tipping point when you're meeting the needs of Rapid City versus, you know, those in a broader region? And what burden should we put on our local taxpayers in our community? And I don't think there's a hard and fast line. I can tell you that we're sensitive to it. We talk about it, we think about it. I can't sit here and tell you today that 42 beds is the exact right number when 43 or 44, we start maybe drawing people from other areas. And so, it's, it's a delicate balance, but we are sensitive to it. We do talk about it and think about it.
I just wondered, you know, part of my question after the chief's comments, I guess, was, when we were studying this, did we look at other regional facilities that have expanded or other community like ours who have expanded these types of services? And are they seeing a "build it and they will come" type of thing happening or not? That was my other question, was, was that looked at in this process?
We've looked at a number of different models around the country. In terms of like programs, there's nothing exactly like ours. Every community's a little bit unique. But we have looked at a number of different communities, and I think you'll find a mixed bag. I think in some cases, they have increased more services than they probably thought they would originally, and some places not. So, I think it is a mixed bag.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, gentlemen, if you would? Mr. LaCroy?
Thank you, Mr. Laurenti. All right, I just want to comment that I've talked extensively on this, if you build it, they will come type concept. You know, I'd like to remind you that, you know, Rapid City is the biggest hub surrounded by the poorest counties in the nation. So, of course, we get a lot of influx of that. And personally, I worked at Detox for nine years way back in the 90s and back forth. So, when we talk about the type of clientele coming in, this is a triage situation that people are coming in. I mean, it's the chronic alcohol, it's the drug users, that type of thing. It's not a place where a person wants to make home. They're not going to drive 500 miles to come here just to spend the night and have a hot meal, you know, three days a week or something like that, because it's just not that built that way. This facility was well-planned, well-researched. I mean, we have crisis care put in there. That was something the city's been involved with, along with the county, working on for years with the Crisis Care Center. And the actual idea of bringing all these services into one building is phenomenal. And other communities are looking at us to see how it's going to work and run. So, I think, in all reality, I think, once we have a good year's worth of numbers, you guys are going to really feel you're getting a big bang for your buck. And I think you're going to see a lot of communities coming forward to us, asking us, "How do we do this?" And the reason, how we did that was because we've always been city-county, we've always worked together.
No, I appreciate that, and I hope that you're correct, and I believe that that's going to be the case. I think initially, as some of them alluded to, Sheriff Tome and Chief, that maybe initially, we don't know what those numbers are going to be, but as it levels out, possibly, I'm hoping that that's the case, that we're helping more people than we are attracting new people to help, if you will. So, I hope that's the case. I yield.
Thank you. Chair would like to recognize Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Questions for Sheriff Tome, please?
Yes, you may.
Sheriff, it's good to see you up here, and thank you for coming forward with this information, and also to the other council members that addressed questions to you. First, if I may make a comment, that for me, it's still a little strange to see you as a sheriff versus being an HR person downstairs, seeing you for those number of years, so.
You've been dying to get me up here and ask you some questions, haven't you?
I applaud you for moving up in the world. I've been the CIP chairman for a couple of years now, and so, I've got a little bit advantage on understanding how this process works. But if you could take me to your page with the five-year comparison on there, and way at the bottom of that page where it says 2019, the FTE number?
Yep.
And I've got a question on that 0.5 unfunded. What does that mean?
So, in our world, of course, like yours, you know, FTEs, full-time equivalents, the, in the county, each of us, like in the city, have to account for the number of FTEs we have. And so, we have enough funding for X amount of FTEs. And in this case, we didn't have to fund a full FTE, we just funded a half FTE. So, the half FTE just stays on our books, and the county can choose during the budget process, either take that and give it to some other department or elected official, or just take it off the books completely, or let it sit there for a year or so to see if we grow back into needing a full FTE versus a half FTE.
Am I correct in assuming that this is also covered by worker comp as well? This position is 0.5?
No, it wouldn't be.
Unless, unless we're staffed, then that status will change.
That's correct.
Yes, thank you. One other thing that I want to make sure the public understands is the cost of warehousing somebody in the jail system versus housing the people in this system. Have you got some numbers that kind of give us a comparison? Because I understand, and if I, correct me if I'm wrong, but it costs way more than to house, warehouse someone in the jail system.
Our daily cost of jails, about $80 a day. Our current cost, what we estimate at La Crosse Street with the Safe Solutions Safe Beds, we estimate at about $20 a day, so about a $60 a day difference. And again, it's a blue mattress on the floor, and you may get a piece of fruit or a cold sandwich on the way out the door, but you don't get three squares or anything like that. It's pretty Spartan.
Thank you. And that's the primary reason I'm supporting this, because if we weren't supporting this type of project, in particular project, even though we're looking at grants to start up, it's still going to be more expensive to warehouse somebody in the jail system than in this type of system. So, I'm totally on board with what you've got. And again, I'm using some history that I've gained from the CIP committee and the information that your staff came forward and presented to us at the CIP committee meeting. So, thank you. Appreciate it. I yield.
Thank you. Chair would like to recognize Alderman Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I love the idea of being more proactive in our approach in terms of, as Alderman Nordstrom said, and as you all said, that it's better to service those folks in Detox rather than put them in jail, and the cost savings alone is big. But a question for any one of you three, how are we measuring success of the Detox program? What is a win?
Right now, with, well, there's two components there. One is Detox, one is what we call Safe Solutions or Safe Beds. And Barry Tice from Health and Human Services, he does the case management piece for the Safe Solutions, and he tracks a tremendous amount of data. We have a lot of data in terms of people that come through the system. I don't think we've fully defined as to what is a success. I mean, the goal of the, as a qualifier, the goal of Safe Solutions is, you have minimal services over here, and you have Detox over here. So, over here, if you're not interested in getting sober, we're not going to spend Detox resources on you. So, you have a Spartan existence over here. If you want to avail yourself to the services and eventually sober up, and we do that through case management, motivational talking to them, trying to get them to cross over, then we'll put additional resources into you in the Detox bed. And we do track, and I can follow up with some information as to Detox, the people have gone through there, both through our outpatient and through our residential programs. And I can send follow-up data on success rates, if you will. I just don't have that with me.
Yeah, and that's fine. I think as we go forward with this investment, I think it's good to share that information so that this council and future councils will see that the money is well-spent. You know, it's, there's a cost savings, and as you said, there's different kind of tiers, programs for those who want to get help and those who don't. I like that. But I think getting that, that information and hearing those stories, quite frankly, of people that it's actually helped. And I think that would be, and I see this FTE count going up. I would love to see that be so, you know, I'd love to see the programs that we have beyond this be so successful that we don't need as much, but we don't know what the future lies with all of that. But, so I think sharing that information will be helpful so that we can understand what the success is of the program. I do support that. Are we doing any sort of proactive programming with any of these funds?
I'm not sure what you mean by proactive program, and I can, I can talk, again, what Barry Tice does through what we call rebound program and through the case management on Safe Solutions, which again, is part of the MacArthur Safety and Justice Challenge Grant. But that's linking people with services. So, rather than just send them back out the door, if we can link them with services and remove some barriers, the goal is to hopefully not see them again or as often.
I think I've shared a little bit about the department's new Quality of Life Unit Initiative, and that is a truly proactive effort that is going to be purposely engaging with those that we frequently interact with, whether it's emergency department visits at the hospital, Detox, or jail, and really focusing on them to try to navigate them to the resources that are available in our community so that they are not a burden in a financial sense, but actually a contributor.
And I like that a lot, and I know this is, this is part of a much larger discussion that we're having as a community. And I guess as we wrap up this portion of the discussion, any final words, especially to the sheriff and the chief, on some things the community at large can do to help, you know, decrease the need for these services? What are, what are the single biggest success factors that we see just as a community that can help?
You know, one thing that's unique here in Rapid City is the amount of panhandling that we have in our downtown area. And we've done a number of things to try to discourage direct cash to intoxicated person. And we have story after story after story of that message not being received. And I understand that it's, it tears your heart in multiple directions when someone who is obviously in great need is asking for a cash donation. But I can tell you that we have great experience seeing that that cash immediately turns, in most cases, into alcohol, and maybe in some cases into other illegal drug substances, and then becomes more of a problem for the individual that you intended to help. So, I think that message right there is important to continue to repeat as much as we can. And I understand the complicated dynamics of asking our community to not give direct cash. But I think if we could redirect that heartfelt desire to contribute and give it to establish resources in our community, the Cornerstone Rescue Mission, the Salvation Army, the Club for Boys, other things like that, I think that it is much more effective.
Very good. So, in your plea to ask for cash, you're saying, "Please don't give cash to those who are asking for it." Very well. Anything else you'd like to add, Sheriff?
I would just dovetail on it. Just that community engagement's important. Government can't solve all the problems, and so, the community engagement, our community partners, you know, we partner with Lutheran Social Services, Behavior Management Systems, and a number of our nonprofits in our community. And without those public-private partnerships, we wouldn't be able to do it.
Yeah. Outstanding. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to address one thing, Mr. Solomon. I mean, when you measure success, a lot of people, you know, that's a great question. I could get, I could tell you plenty of success stories that have come through Detox. And as working there, we have a wide variety of people that come through. We've had doctors, we've had lawyers. This isn't just a certain type of population. Detox has seen several people, and we have several success stories out of it. We've got a very successful businessman in this town who went through part of the program myself, as well, back in 1980s, '88. Dee Glasgow helped me out, got me out of the road. I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for Dee Glasgow and his program. So, there are a lot of programs that this helps. It's not just a certain population, it's a wide variety. And if you want to talk to some more people, contact me afterwards, I can hook you up.
Well, Commissioner LaCroy, you are certainly a success story in our community. We're very proud to have you on the commission and grateful for how far you've come, and the story that you are living is giving hope to others. So, thank you for, for sharing that. And I think with that, I yield.
Thank you. I currently have no one else in the queue. I did want to ask one follow-up question, Sheriff Tome, if you don't mind. When Alderwoman Drew was asking you about the budgetary numbers, you had mentioned that during at least a portion, if not all, of 2019- that during at least a portion, if not all, of twenty nineteen, or the eighteen, nineteen budget year, you're going to be running two facilities, the one over on La Crosse as well as, um, the care campus. But then you also mentioned that that will only go on until you do, uh, complete the second floor. Do you have an estimated time of when that second floor will be completed?
I'd say sometime in the next eight to ten months is our goal. We, we've started the process with the county commission, the architects, and design. So, it'll be a matter of getting it, get the design back with the county commission, put it out to bid, and then move forward. We have the funding, so.
Okay, thank you. And the only reason I was asking that is that, um, I personally would not expect your utility bill to go down when you actually start filling that second floor. I think it's pretty much going to be a wash, and you probably have budgeted the correct number, so.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, I currently still see no other, uh, commit, uh, city council members in the queue. Thank you, all three of you, for coming tonight and answering our questions and bringing a lot more information to our public on the care campus, as well as the shared responsibility that the city and county partnership in. Thank you very much. Uh, city council members, any other discussion on item number one? Any motions? Got a motion to acknowledge item number one's discussion. Second, uh, motion by Nordstrom, second by Laurenti. Any further discussion, seeing none? All in favor of the acknowledgement?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now on to discussion item number two, which is the discussion of interdepartmental charges and the PILTS, or payment in lieu of taxes. Um, I believe, Sean, there you are, Sean. If you wouldn't mind approaching the podium?
Sean Kurbanov, city budget analyst.
Thank you, Sean. And so, the question that was raised on here was knowing what the calculations are. And, um, I did notice, uh, Alderwoman Drew, Drewery did pull up some attachments, and you've got the PILT calculation on there. And that seems fairly straightforward because it's evaluation times the mill levy to come up with those PILTS, um, values. Um, it does look like there is, um, one or two that are not being fully implemented. Can you please explain the reasoning behind the ones that are not being fully, um, charged out at this time?
Is this for PILT?
PILT.
That would be a question for Pauline.
Oh, okay. Is that what you were pointing at?
Sorry.
Pauline, would you mind, uh, explaining?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you recall, last year was the first year that we looked at, um, some formulas for the central services. And because the, specifically, it was the civic center in the PILT that was getting, um, phased in, that, they were actually being phased in on both the interdepartmental charges and the PILT. But that is because the increase before last year, um, was nonexistent for, for the civic center. And the amount was so large that they could not absorb it all in one, in one year. So, it was the determination that we would do it over two or three years, depending on, um, the dollar amount. And so, I think this year for the civic center, they have one-third of it, I believe, um, being charged to them for PILT.
All right. Thank you. Um, thank you, Pauline. So, Sean, now, I think that answers any questions. I don't see anybody else in the queue concerning the PILTS. So, Sean, could you run us through the calculations? First of all, let me ask you this, because I believe last year you indicated that not all of the interdepartmental charges have been, had been reviewed at that time to actually come up with the actual cost structure that could be defined for each one of those. Is that completed this year?
No, it is not.
Okay. Was, how much prog, more progress was made on actually looking at, um, a cost structure or putting a definition as to the interdepartmental charges across all of the enterprise funds?
Yes, we tried to address this issue through the, uh, optimization or review of, uh, priority-based budgeting programs. And it turned out, it proved to be a project, uh, that would require a much more substantial investment of time. So, that's a, uh, work in progress, and that will be coming forward, uh, to you, uh, hopefully next fiscal cycle.
Oh, okay. So, you're, because that was going to be my follow-up question. So, you're anticipating that you'll need another year to complete and have a definition for all the interdepartmental charges for the enterprises, or just to have progress on them?
Complete.
Complete?
That would be just for the, uh, non-central service, interdepartmental charges.
Okay, so please explain the difference between whatever you just said, non-central services versus what's non-central services?
So, we have around five million dollars in, in, in the departmental charges. About two million of that is for central services. That is the, uh, departments or services that are provided by, um, uh, departments like HR, IT, to other departments. Uh, whereas, uh, there are also interdepartmental charges that, uh, are, um, payments or charges, I would say, for, um, uh, services that are provided by a non-central department to another non-central department.
So, that would be like an enterprise fund to an enterprise fund?
That would be correct.
Is that our definition?
Or Public Works to an enterprise fund.
Or Public Works to an enterprise?
Public Works Engineering, to be more precise.
Oh, specifically, like to a water department, or, or something that's in, in a coordinated, uh, uh, relationship?
That's right.
Okay, I, I think I understand. Um, I may have some other questions, but I'd like to recognize Alderman Laurenti. Oh, uh, Alderman Laurenti would like to recognize Pauline Sumption first.
Thank you. Just for a little further clarification, central services are the departments that provide a service to everybody else. Not one department is not touched by my office, HR, IT, the attorney's office, and I think, um, equipment maintenance is also in there. The other ones are specis, you know, they aren't necessarily to all the departments, it's specific to a service that they are provided. Um, I know that you talked about Public Works Administration, but the other one is like the energy plant does some monitoring for some general fund departments, plus they do some monitoring for some enterprise funds. So, they, but they don't go for all of them. So, that way, that's why that's kind of a separated thing from the central services.
All right, thank you. Thank you for that definition. Chair, we'd like to recognize Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. And if, I'd like to go right back to, uh, the finance officer, if I may, please.
Yes, you may.
Pauline, what is the current method? What are the factors used for interde, interdepartmental charges today, since we don't have a change? I'm going to get to that, Sean, if you.
It actually, it, it varies. So, the calculations for the central services are attached, the spreadsheets that Sean used when he provided those numbers to me. Um, so, my charges are based on everyone else's budgets as like a percent of mine. Um, IT might be based off of the number of devices each department has. HR is based off the number of FTEs everybody has. You know, there, there's a specific function that you provide or that it's tied to, to, to split that cost amongst everybody. Sean has also taken into account what services are provided to other general fund services. So, it's not like my whole budget is getting charged out, it's only the proportionate share to non-general fund is getting charged out.
As your proportion of budget is to each of the areas that you provide services to, or the overall budget?
So, say my budget is a million dollars, I'm going to put it in easy terms. General fund, oh, for the overall budget is sixty percent, so forty percent is then allocated out to non-general fund budgets. And that's what the interdepartmental charge is then for my office. So, of that four hundred thousand that might be charged out, ten percent might be to, um, the golf course. Twenty percent might be to the civic center, twenty percent to the airport, that type of thing. It's just really based on what their budgets are.
So, the attorney's office would be much the same?
I would, I think they kind of estimated how much time they've spent on, on the departments to, to allocate that. I will defer that to Sean, because I haven't looked at that one specifically.
Okay, and I appreciate that segue, because that's exactly where I want to go. Sean, so, is there some new method being looked at? Now, I, just, if, it's disappointing to me, honestly, that we don't have our arms further wrapped around these interdepartmental charges, because this was a, I thought, an important issue in last year's budget. But I think honestly, what we need to do as a council this year is not wait till the next budget. We need to make it an agenda item, and I, I'd be glad to do it in legal and finance, because we need to get our arms wrapped around this, and we need to make it a priority. It's not going to be a priority until this council makes it a priority. Um, and I don't know, you know, what Sean's, uh, uh, schedule is like, but in my opinion, um, this ought to go fairly high, because it's a, it's a large sum of money that gets shifted from department to department every year. And we have no method, and we have no, there's no methodology, there's no science to why we do what we do. Um, and it's, I don't know that, that it's, it could be representative of the services provided by other departments, but then it could be way off. So, that's the whole point here, is to get our arms wrapped around it, so we can say, you know, what Pauline just said was really close, so we're happy with that. It's the unknown. So, my question to you is, have we even thought about a method for central services, for the attorney's office, for finance, for, uh, you know, parks and rec, for the places, especially the departments that have the largest budgets that are dependent on interdepartmental charges? Are we, have we thought about methods yet? And if the answer is no, I'm okay with that, but...
The, the, the answer is a partial yes. If you're talking about central services, then the method is there, and it is, um, closely approximate to the amount of benefits that each department receives.
It's what Pauline's saying, as a percentage of their budget is of the general fund.
Or if you take equipment maintenance, for example, it's, uh, direct billing of labor. If you're taking, if you take HR, it's the number of FTEs, both full-time and part-time. And that depends on whether the, the positions are benefited versus non-benefited.
Thank you. And I think that's, I think that just, uh, makes my mind up. I'm bringing this to legal and finance, because we need to see this. We, as a council, need to see it, we need to question it. This is a large portion of the taxpayers' money that's, and I'm not saying that there's anything being hidden, I just want to be upfront about that. This isn't some way of shifting money around that, the tax, you know, this isn't some, like, you know, cigar-filled room. This is not what I'm talking about at all. So, anybody listening today or tonight, that is not what I'm implying. Um, what I'm trying to say is that we need to nail this down, get our arms around it as a council. Staff may have a good feel for it, and they may be comfortable with it, but this council needs to be comfortable with the way that we do interdepartmental charges, because we're ultimately responsible to the taxpayers for this budget. So, I yield. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you, Sean. I currently have no other council member in the queue, so I want to follow up with a couple other questions. As Alderman Laurenti was saying, and what you have, uh, quantified right now is that the central services does have a formula which is applied out to the enterprise funds. And you said, if I, and I'm asking you to confirm, that's roughly about two million, or accounts for two million of the five million dollars that's being charged interdepartmental?
That would be correct. And the charges are assessed against both enterprise and non-enterprise funds.
Okay, so they're being char, but we only see...
They are assessed, but not charged.
Right, right. So, there, and that's good, because much to Alderman Laurenti's point, we would, do want to see what it actually costs each department, whether they are a general fund department utilizing those services or an enterprise. But the interdepartmental charges themselves only track now those charges that go between enterprise funds and the general fund, no matter which way it's going, no matter which way it's being charged.
That, that's correct.
Is that correct? And it's still, right now, bottom line, has an influx from enterprise funds to the general fund of five million dollars.
Can you please repeat the question?
So, right now, what is presented on the interdepartmental charges, bottom line, that five million dollars, is actually the amount that is going into the general fund from enterprise funds.
That would be correct.
Yes. So, we do have an influx of money coming into the general fund that is being supplied by rate-paying funds, or those funds, or enterprises that are supposed to be operating as businesses.
In exchange for services from the general fund?
Well, two million of it is in exchange that we can define for services. The rest of them still haven't been defined, so the, we have three million that's unknown at this time.
They were at some point.
Yeah, I believe we passed discussions, it was like, you know, well over a decade ago, or fifteen years ago, and have taken an increase of, you know, plus five percent, plus three percent, whatever. That's, that's where we need to get our arms wrapped around, and I believe that's what Alderman, Alderman Laurenti is saying is, we're not saying it's a backfield sm, smoke room, but we don't have a definition of why those enterprise funds are being charged what they're charged today if they're non-central services. Correct?
That's, that's right.
So, here's my biggest concern, Sean, and you could probably answer it quicker than me trying to go through here, because they're divided up into several funds. As a city council, we recently raised water rates and wastewater rates, sewage rates. Did any of the interdepartmental charges increase to take in more money from those accounts to the general fund?
Not to account for the rate increase?
No, 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 I'm not, that's not what I'm asking, because I'm, I'm drawing, I'm trying to draw a line here, because what we said was that we were going to charge these rates in order to build up our reserves. So, I personally am not interested in seeing any of the water funds or any of the sewage funds actually pay more into the general fund, even if it's, has a defined calculation, because I just don't think that's fair when we're asking our ratepayers to pay more money when we said it was because we needed to build up our reserves, not cash flow the general fund. That's just my opinion, I'm just stating it up here. So, can you tell me, how many or how much money did any of the water enterprise funds or the wastewater enterprise, sewage water funds increase, if at all?
I will answer this questions, question by saying that the method for non-central services has not changed.
So, did they increase at all?
They increased just like they increased in the past.
Okay, so, I, so one of the things I would ask my peers to do is consider at least rolling that back, because I would assume that whatever department is getting those would be that coordinated partner in the general fund. Like, if it was Public Works, I, I think that's where the money would be taken back out of if we decrease just the portion that was increased. So, I, I am going to offer that up for a consideration as a possible decrease in the budget, only because I cannot support personally funding our general fund through increases to our ratepayers. So, thank you, Sean. Please stand by. I'm going to defer and recognize Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam President. Some more questions for Mr. Kurbanov, please.
Yes, you may.
Mr. Kurbanov, um, just a couple of questions, and I'm going to try to simplify this a whole bunch, going to try. Don't know if I can get it accomplished, but, uh, can you explain to us about how long it will take to do this project that you're considering to do, uh, for us, to give us the percentages and, and everything else that's involved with, uh, PILTS and then IDC, interdepartmental charges?
I cannot estimate the, the period of time it will take, but, uh, I, I will tell you that it will involve multiple divisions and multiple departments and working with them, just, just to come up with a, uh, workable solution to, to estimate the rest of the charges.
Are you considered part of the central services?
I am not.
You're not? The, the other, maybe, maybe oversimplifying it, or maybe making it more complicated, but can you explain to us a little bit about how, using the water rates as an example? When it comes to, and here in City Hall, the number of users that are, here in City Hall, can you explain to us how that process works? Um, because we get a lot of visitors in here, as well as the employees, et cetera, and the school is involved in it. How does that work on the, uh, utility rates? Not just water, but the, uh, the sewer system as well?
Again, uh, the whole premise here is that we don't rob Peter to pay Paul.
Correct.
So, we want, uh, taxpayers to pay their share and, um, and ratepayers to, uh, pay their share. If there is a subsidy that is needed, that needs to be visible. That's the, the ultimate goal, that will be the ultimate goal of, uh, a method for calculation of interdepartmental charges. And, uh, I am not sure what, uh, the, the, the question is about the rates, but that, that, again, that, that will be the, the ultimate goal of the, of the review that we will have.
Exactly. So, so I'm also thinking of, uh, again, picking on the water rates that we just used recently, uh, just a clearer understanding of how that works for the parks department, because they're out there watering the golf courses, et cetera. And then also the airport, how they're using our water, and how we get reimbursed, or how they pay for that water. So, can you, and that, and I don't mean to limit it to that, that we've got other government buildings here that are using the, the city water as well. Can you explain how that, that process, funding or charging, how that works? So, to address the concern for the ratepayers not having to pay twice?
Uh, with your permission and the, the permission from... With your permission and the permission from the Madam Chair, I would like to defer to Dale Tek. Yeah.
To Mr. Tek? Sean, did you say to Mr. Tek?
Yes, Dale Tek, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tek, would you mind answering that question?
I'll most certainly try. Mr. Nordstrom, Mr. Nordstrom, all general fund water users are metered, but they're not billed. So the water that's used by them is tracked, however, it's not billed. For other enterprises funds, such as the Civic Center, the airport, they pay their water rates. So they pay the, for the water that they use. I hope that helps, is that what you were looking for?
It, it does, and I hope it, I hope it clarifies a few points, because I think it simplifies it, for me, it simplifies it a whole bunch, so, so that we understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, but from what I'm hearing, the ratepayers are not paying twice on this. So I want to make sure that everybody understands that point on that. Am I asking the...
Can you define what you mean by ratepayers paying twice?
Sure. For example, let's see, using the library to start with, as one example. We get, the, the library brings in customers, and they're using the facilities, restrooms, bathrooms, drinking water, et cetera. How is that cost recovered from the library? That's my first example.
Well, I, I guess I'll defer to the library director, but I don't believe that they pay water bill. That's a public general fund building, so the water is metered, but it is unbilled.
And, and my, my understanding is primarily taken care of through their user rates, user fees, excuse me, user fees through the library.
Well, the library doesn't pay a water bill, so their, their fees that they're covering don't pay for water.
Thank you. And then the, the next question I have is using an enterprise fund, since the Civic Center's been mentioned already, and using that as an example for the, how the ratepayers or the consumers of water are not paying the bill twice over there, is that the bill or the, the amount of money that's generated by the Civic Center is getting, coming from ticket sales, it's coming from other user fees, for example. So I want to make sure that, and I'm not, I'm saying this correctly, is that the users are not getting paid, paying the water rate twice.
The users of the facility through their fees that they're paying are, are paying for that water, yes.
Yes, thank you.
Once again, I believe the Civic Center's primary use, or the largest use that they have of water, is more likely irrigation in the summertime, which is a fee that they're paying to keep their landscape in green.
Thank you. I, I hope that kind of simplifies it, and, and in my mind, it does, and so, making sure that the ratepayers are not paying twice. So that's, that's where I'm standing at, so I'll yield.
Thank you. And, Mr. Tek, may I just ask a thought, because I'm, Alderman Nordstrom is stating that the ratepayers are not paying twice, but I want to go back to the library example he used. If the library is not paying their water bill, but that water is being distributed, and the cost of the water enter, enterprise funds has to pay for itself, then isn't that considered as part of the ratepayers' rate that they have to pay based on the volume of water that is used, whether it's paid for or not?
That is correct, yes. It's no different than the Parks Department or any other general fund water user that is metered but not billed.
Thank you. So, so I, I, in my opinion, I differ from what Alderman Nordstrom says, because to me, that is the definition of a ratepayer is paying twice, or maybe not twice, but paying more than just their portion. So, thank you for the clarification. Chair would like to recognize Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair, and I'm going to make a motion that we retain 100% of the water rate increases within the water fund. If I can get a second. Thank you. And I, and I, I guess what I'd like to do is, I don't know if it's out of order, I mean, honestly, my motion, I, I wanted to question at first, but I knew if I started questioning, I couldn't make the motion, so it was easier to make the motion and then people, and then be told that it's out of order. So, I don't know how we're going to affect it, or how it affects the 2019 budget, but I too believe that the increases in the user rates for water were, were sold as our ability to get that water fund up, the reserves up, so that we can deliver safe water for the future, whatever that means, new treatment plants, whatever it is, better filtration systems, upgrades, replacements of old systems. That was my understanding, and I don't know if all of the council members have the same impression that I have, but I believe that that's what our ratepayers believe, they were told, because I have talked to some of them specifically about the water rate issues. So, that's why I made the motion, and we'll go from there. I yield.
So Alderman Laurenti, before I go on to Alderman, that are still in the queue, your motion is just for the water rates, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so for the water rates in the 2019 budget to not be increased over 2018?
Yeah, the increases that we passed, that's, this is the difficult part about this, is the water rate increases that we just passed, that are earmarked for the 2019 budget and beyond, I believe it's a five-year rate increase, that those water rates, I'm hoping were not, the part of that study was not about the fact that there's a known factor of a certain percentage of those increases going to the general fund. Maybe we already have that as the, as the status quo today, I don't know. But in my opinion, that's why I made the motion, was that, beginning with 2018, of course, or the 2019 budget, the water increases that the users will be paying, my motion was to make sure that those are retained within the water fund, to do exactly what I had previously stated.
Okay, so, and I'm just trying to, so...
Understood.
We're talking about interdepartmental charges, so if I can clarify your motion?
I know.
Yeah, you just are basically saying for the 2019 budget, because that's the one we're looking at right now, that any interdepartmental charges for the water funds that are affected by that water rate increase, they should not be increased, if I'm understanding you correctly.
Correct.
Does a seconder understand that?
Yep, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Chair would like to recognize Alderman Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm glad you clarified that, because the way the motion came across would have done absolutely nothing without clarifying that. So, I do want to go back to the water rates again, just so I can bring this back up, I haven't brought this up for years, so there's a few people on this dais that probably haven't heard this, but you know, if you really want to be fair, as far as the water rates and the ratepayers, okay, and we're just talking about the non-billed water that goes to our parks, goes to our soccer fields, goes to our baseball fields, goes to, you know, lots and lots and lots of other places. And the ratepayers are on the hook for all of that. I suggested years ago to start shifting some of this money over to the general fund, because when it shifted to the general fund, then our taxpayers from out of town that use the baseball fields and the soccer fields and the different, you know, water users get charged some of this, and it's not strictly the ratepayers. So, you know, and I think there's a lot of merit to that, I think that unfortunately, we're always going to have increasing costs in water. You know, if you want to have clean, safe water, you're going to have increasing costs over the years. I don't agree with the way that we did it the last time, I think that this should have been something that years ago should have been budgeted in, small increases every year, you know, like a cost of living increase in it, so we don't have to do this every 10 years. And if you look at it historically, it's about every 10 years we come out with a giant rate hike, because no other council wants to put their butt on the line to take 1% or 2% every year, because it is going to, to go up. You know, and, and historically, I mean, if you look at 10 years ago, when we raised the rates, our revenues declined and flattened out, because people stopped watering in the summertime, people started conserving water, and that could happen again. So I just want to mention that, you know, if we're looking at and budgeting for X amount of money, it may not come in that way. So, anyway, just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you. I currently have no other council members in the queue. The motion on the floor is concerning just water rate funds for interdepartmental charges, and for the 2019 budget, no additional increases over the 2018 interdepartmental charges for those funds that are affected by the water rate increases. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Modrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know we don't have the attorney here, but I, I want to understand why we're isolating one fund when we're on the topic of discussion of interdepartmental charges, but we're going to start with one fund, and are we going to take one fund at a time? How are we organized this meeting? Because it's a, we've already voted on the water fund, we know where the water fund's going, we're trying to, we're trying to tweak something that's, that's already in the process, but we have a lot of items to cover, and if we want to take this one item at a time, that's up to you, Madam Chair, but this seems to me that that's what this motion is. And I question its order, because it is truly one item at a time.
Yes, yes, we have 10 items to discuss for tonight, and we can either take motions on each individual item, or there can be a totality brought before first reading, but the motions that passed budget hearings have been done one at a time.
So I'd like to ask the motion maker, if I could, to be clear. In the end result, what will you get out of this motion if it succeeds?
Well, my intention is that those increases with the interdepartmental charges, the ones that are, where they're getting, where, where it's water being provided, as we've talked about with these different departments, that they aren't benefiting from this water rate increase. That benefit is supposed, supposed, and that's what you're going to be voting on, is supposed to be going to the water fund to ensure that the reserves get to where they need to be, that, that they are prepared to do the necessary maintenance upgrades and new water treatment plants and those types of things. So this is a way of protecting the water fund to ensure that, and it might be part of what Mr. Roberts is saying, the revenues may not come in, so even more so, it becomes important that we are trying to deliver, which is what, we are trying to deliver what we were wanting to do with the water rate increases, which was to build the reserves.
I believe we've been doing that, but I'd like to also ask Dale, if I could, since he's Public Works.
Yes, you may.
So Dale, if you could bring my question forward, and what, what is the accomplishment of the council right now on the current motion? Something good.
Well, as far as the water rates are concerned, it's not just for revenue. Water rates cover the entire costs to operate the water system, to do capital improvement projects, to fund for bonding, so the increase in water rates are going to increase our capital improvement spending. You have to hire legal experts to review contracts, you have to hire IT folks to run the computer systems for billing, so our costs go up every year. I'd say interdepartmental charges are going to have to go up every year to follow that increase in need and users that we have, to hold it artificially at this year's budget level, I don't think is an appropriate way to cover your costs. So I appreciate what Mr. Laurenti is doing in trying to make sure that all goes to the water that's coming out of the faucet, but there are a lot more things involved in it. You know, as I said, legal, if we are obtaining easements to do a project, our legal department is, is using a lot of their time to do that. So that is a water cost.
And I appreciate that, Dale, and I think that that's the important part of understanding where this motion is, and if it is a, if it's a motion that's appropriate, and I feel that it isn't, I think this motion should go down, with all respect, I know that the purpose is there, but I think we can do that as a council in another means, but not at this, this motion and at this budget time. So I cannot vote for this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Tek, for that, for your comments, because that's much of the larger interdepartmental charge to, subject or topic of discussion. I just want to remind everyone that the fees that you, or the services that you were describing, as we got a definition, were the central services, and those have already been defined by an equation. So I guess the bigger question that I think the council is considering is the additional $3 million in interdepartmental charges that currently has no defined definition of an equation of why they're being charged out. So, but we do still have some more lights. So the Chair would like to recognize Alderwoman Drury.
Thank you, Chair. I guess, as an opponent to the water rate increase, and then it did pass, and what I would like to see is then that rate safeguarded to build the reserves and not paid out as interdepartmental charges. So for me, the motion was to safeguard those rate increases to build the reserves for future projects down the road, not as to pick everything apart, but more as a safeguard. I mean, we wanted, we voted, this council voted for those water rate increases, and now I would ask you to safeguard them for the reserves, to build the reserves, not to have those reserves paid out as interdepartmental charges. Thank you.
The Chair would like to recognize Alderman Nordstrom.
Madam Chair, I see Pauline is in the queue, if I may defer to her, and then I'll, if it's all right, she can go first, and then I'll take second.
Sure. Pauline, Alderman Nordstrom is turning to you, if you've got any comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to point out what we're looking at dollar-wise, because I know that, that's sometimes important. The water enterprise fund as presented by the mayor in total is roughly $20.7 million. That's about a $2.9 million increase over the current year budget. Of that $2.9 million, the increase in interdepartmental charges that we're talking about, $61,000.
Thank you, Pauline.
And to add on to that, if you cut, obviously, the interdepartmental charges, that's considered a revenue source, so then you'll have to tell me where to cut the expenses.
Thank you, Pauline. Alderman Nordstrom, I believe you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That answers a lot of questions right there that I had, but if I can go to Mr. Tek one more time.
Yes, you may.
Dale, I'm assuming that when these rate studies went through and all of the factors were considered, the, shall I say, the safeguards? That's the wrong word. The, the enterprise funds, excuse me, the, all of the other departments that are using water rates, that'll all be, that's already calculated in to the baseline formula that we already approved.
Yeah, that's correct. And if I can go a little beyond that, as the, as the Director of the Water Department, as well as my senior staff that's responsible for managing the Water Department, we don't like to see water funds going to interdepartmental charges either. So we, we certainly have a strong voice in what we feel is appropriate. We don't want those funds just to go willy-nilly to another general fund. That's, that's something we keep a pretty close eye on.
Thank you. I think that answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go on to another Alderman that's currently in the queue, Pauline, you gave us the total 2019 budget as provided by the mayor, or presented by the mayor of the Water Department was $20.7 million, and the increase to that 2019 budget over 2018 was $2.9 million?
Rounding, yes.
Yes, rounding. And then the increase to the interdepartmental charges from 2018 to 2019 is $61,000. So Alderman Laurenti's motion would be just concerning that $61,000.
Right.
Correct. Could you also provide what the total, as prevented, presented by the mayor, total interdepartmental charge for the water enterprise fund is? And while you look that up, the Chair would like to recognize Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair, and if I may, I'd like to ask the Public Works Director a question on this particular subject, agenda item.
Yes, you may.
My question to you is, what's the best way, understanding my intent, is it best to bring back the water rate increase and secure those increases for what I'm talking about? Does that make sense? I mean, what's the best way to ensure that... I mean, what's the best way to ensure that we're not spreading that money out? And I get it with the interdepartmental charges. I get that it's $61,000, but to me, $61,000 is a lot of money. I know in the realm of just the increase, it's a smaller amount. But my intent here is to make sure that this council increased the water rates on the premise that it was going to make the water fund much more secure for the future, build up the reserves, and make sure that we can deliver, we'll save water, that that is safeguarded. What's the... I just wanted to get your suggestion. Is there a better way to do it than what we're doing today?
My suggestion is to allow Sean to do his work to determine what the appropriate interdepartmental charges are citywide, so that each enterprise fund is paying the correct share. Those are services that are rendered to the enterprise funds that need to be continued. If we need extra legal... I keep picking on legal, because they're not here. If we need extra legal help, we should be paying for it. The water fund should be paying for it. I don't think arbitrarily saying we're going to cap the interdepartmental charges is fair to the other enterprise funds that'll have to pick up.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. And to that note, I appreciate your input, and I'm going to withdraw my motion. Chair?
All right.
And I just wanted to make one small comment, and then I think that makes it even more important and much more of an item we need to expedite, which is getting these calculations on interdepartmental charges and actually direct some deadlines for that as a city council, so that we can get our arms around that. I yield.
Thank you. Chair would like to recognize Alderman... Oh, wait, first of all, Pauline, do you have my number?
I do. I show the total interdepartmental charges for 2019 for the water fund, and this is net, because they actually charge out some other departments as well. Would be $555,266.
Chair would like to recognize Alderman Solomon.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Laurenti, for pulling that. You know, the more I thought about it, I thought we... Us making kind of this rash to feel a little rash. And I think it's worth discussing. We want to protect all of these... Really, all of these funds, and particularly if we want to make sure that we're following through on our rate increases. But I think allowing Sean some time to do this in the scientific way in which we asked would be good, because quite frankly, attorneys do cost money, even if you're using the city attorneys. I mean, so as you use that example, they're not free, as we know, and there's... Somebody's got to pay for it. Somebody's paying for that. And every time we use the city attorney for just an hour, that costs money, and there's opportunity loss. So I think there's a lot that we have to kind of dig into, and I'm just not comfortable making a snap judgment tonight. So I was going to vote no, not so much because I'm against it. I would be... I would consider looking into it more, but I'm... I think we need to let Sean do his work. So Alderman Laurenti already pulled it before I got a chance to speak, and he's a smart man. And yeah, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Currently, no one else is in the queue. So Pauline, just as a benchmark, probably because the city attorney's office is not here tonight, but they've been pointed to a lot, what is the current city attorney's total budget for 2019?
Total net budget, and I'm going to try and back it out the other way, so I can give Before you deduct the interdepartmental charges, is $781,250.
And then how much is interdepartmental charges revenue going to the attorneys?
Just shy of $399,000.
So a little over half. So just a little over half. I will make a comment of this, is that when I first looked at this example several years ago, it was a lot more lopsided than this. So Sean, congratulations on straightening out a portion of this. This looks like it may be a lot more reasonable, because I believe it was closer to like 80% was being funded from enterprise funds in the past. So this is getting better. I would like just remind everybody again, Sean, what I'm hearing up here is that we need to get you the time in order to actually define all of those interdepartmental charges. I believe that's the direction that the council wants to see. I currently have no one else in the queue. Is there any further discussion on item number two? Do we need a motion to acknowledge? Got a motion by Modrick to acknowledge item two discussion, second by Laurenti. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number three is the last three years' building department revenues and fees, and I believe this request was made by Alderman Roberts. Would you like to start?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. May I ask our finance officer a question?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. Pauline, the numbers that you sent me, on the revenue side, does that include all of the revenue coming into building services?
That includes all the revenue that is... Let me find this. There's a multitude of object codes that I included in it. I took it off of the revenue sheet. It's... It is labeled building permits and plan review on the revenue sheet typically. And includes... And I don't have all the definitions of the object codes, but there's one, two, three.
Well, on the building permit review team, on their website, they have it broke down to total fees. Would that be all the revenues coming into that department?
I don't provide that number, so I don't know where that number is coming from.
Okay. Well, their number is $2,537,306,000 for all total permit... Or all permit fees collected for that department. And I'm guessing that that is also the number for the inspections, for everything that comes in.
And that could be. And my inspections numbers are different, or separate, so I apologize for that.
So, okay. Well, can I... Since I took this off of the city website, can I use that number? Is that the... Is that the actual revenue that's going into that department?
I don't know what he's looking at, so I'm sorry.
If I may. Yeah, I'm not sure what figures you're looking at specifically, but in our budgeting in the Community Development Department, we lump together planning and building into development services under one budget category. Okay. All right. So this number here would be specific to building permit fees, so that should be total for that, yes.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So Alderman Roberts, if... Mr. Young just pointed to a number. If you could provide us with what he was alluding to?
All the building permit fee number that he alluded to for 2017 would be $2,537,306. Now, the expenses for that department of what Pauline gave us is $1 million for '17, So if those numbers are correct, that means $912,000 had to go back somewhere, and I'm guessing it was a general fund.
Is that your statement?
That's my statement. I mean, who can answer that question?
Pauline, would you like to...
I can pop in a little bit. Part of the revenue also includes the fire department's inspection fees, but you don't see those costs in the numbers I gave you. I took strictly the building inspections org code for the costs. That's the only cost that I have included. But I know there are costs outside of that org code that if we did interdepartmental charges between the general fund departments, you know, general fund to general fund still, that number would be increased for those expenses. But we quit doing those... Oh, I believe Alan Hanks was the mayor at the time.
So Pauline, I believe, and I'm just going to try to interpret. The bigger question is, let's say that this... There really was $912,000 difference. The question is, is did that money just go into the general fund to offset the cost of the central services? Or did it... Where did... What happened to the extra revenue that came in from those building fees?
All the revenues are brought into the general fund for these, I believe, unless there's... There's additional costs for like connection fees and stuff like that, but those automatically go to the water and sewer funds for that. Any general building inspection-type things go to the general fund.
Okay. Well, here's an interesting question, then. By ordinance, we have a policy for fees to be refunded. So if you've got that much more money coming in on building permits, how do our contractors come in and ask for it to be refunded?
So let's direct that question to our city attorney, who happens to be in the seat... Yes, he's down at the end of the table. He came in. Thank you, Joel, for joining us tonight. Joel, do you want to answer this? I believe this was in our first budget hearing. This kind of sounds like the same question that was posed to you, which is something to the effect of, if we are charging fees, do we have a requirement to try to figure out the total cost associated with that? And if we truly are collecting more than what it's costing us to provide those services, does the city have an obligation to refund those?
Well, and I guess I don't know that the question... That was the question I heard. But in answer to what I guess was just stated, generally, and as we discussed at the last meeting, a fee is meant to cover the cost of the program or service. Now, the law does not give a scientific formula for what specifically... How much money you can make off a fee before it then becomes a tax. I think the law recognizes you're estimating your building permits for the upcoming year. You may have more buildings come in. You may generate additional revenue, and that doesn't, all of a sudden, because you've taken in more money than what it actually costs to administer the service, that now all of a sudden it's a tax, and you have to refund that. On the other hand, the law does say generally, if you are charging a fee, or if you have authority to charge a fee to cover the cost of the service, and you are making, and it's generally a reasonable or unreasonable amount of revenue off of it, then it becomes a tax. And unless you have authority to tax, it's not something that would legally be collectible. So part of the problem we have is, I think, right now, in the numbers, everybody is using the numbers that seem to be favorable to them, and we need to make sure, because the cost is a total cost of what it actually costs to provide that service. It isn't just Brad Solon's budget. It's all the overhead, all the IT support, all the fire and all that. But if the revenue exceeds it, and by an amount that's significant and consistently, then yes, that potentially could be considered a tax, and if challenged, it could be a problem. As far as the ordinance, I guess I'm unclear what ordinance...
That's a... Unfortunately, I didn't have time to print it up today. I can get it. I'll email it over to you. It's a resolution. It's not an ordinance. I take that back.
Okay.
So it's a resolution. And it's where we changed the 2018 AIB in our ordinance. So in, I believe it was second page of the International Building Code, there's a reference to the city not charging more than 20% of what the costs for services are. Now, if you go to the numbers I'm showing, you're way over 20%. If you go to the numbers that Pauline is showing, you know, we're only about 10% over, but we're still over. Okay? And if you take all of the interdepartmental charges for your department, which are $161,000, and add into that, you're still over what it takes to run that department. So either way you look at it, we're already over the amount to run that department where we're at right now. And you know, if you want to do a little bit of research, take a look at Sioux Falls' cost for building permits, we are already higher than Sioux Falls. So you know, I think this is, and I'm just going to say it, this is a way to pad the general fund. That's all we're doing here, and we were just talking about that before. And I don't think... And hopefully, if somebody will make the motion, but if not, I will make the motion to remove this money from the budget, and let's find somewhere else to replace it and keep these permits where they're at now. I'm done for the minute, for the moment.
Thank you, Alderman Roberts.
We can start the discussion.
I do have another council member, so any motion that you want to make, you can always chime back in and make, because I'm not going to accept that as a motion, since you talk first. Okay. Chair would like to recognize Alderman Solomon.
Madam Chair, before I speak, the mayor's here. Can we let him touch on the subject? Or should I just give my time to allow that?
No, there is no time tonight. If you haven't been able to notice...
I just see him standing there. He's clearly wanting to say something, and then I can go from there.
Mayor, if you don't mind, Alderman Solomon would like to defer for your comments first, and then he will retain the floor.
Sure. This is in part why I urge the council to take the building permit issue separately from the budget. There's no consequence to doing them on different timelines. If we approve the budget on schedule at the end of September, and you approve or disapprove the building permit issue in November or December, regardless of the outcome, we can change the budget or leave it as is. It's not a consequence for us to do that. But here's what you're talking about. You've got an incomplete picture. And just to clarify, the building inspection, the development service center, the front desk folks, which include Brad Solon, the inspectors, some planners, also include Public Works, engineers who do inspections, also includes fire department, all in the general fund. And the general fund does not have the same type of accounting as enterprise funds. Enterprise funds are very close to accounting for a private business. So to go into this now and try to create, to explore the actual expenses to produce building permits and everything that is involved with that, has really taken just a little bit of time, and we don't want to bring that back here half-baked. We want to bring back the facts. We can show the math, let everyone see how we got there. I've had meetings every couple of days on this to get a little bit closer to it, but we also have other things that need to be done in City Hall, so we haven't got this complete yet. I have my next meeting tomorrow morning on the issue. So we will bring back the figures on what we calculate to be the actual expenses needed to produce a building permit.
Thank you, Mary. And just for clarification, I believe we also defined between addressing you and Pauline assumption at our first budget hearing, that if the budget is approved as presented with the building fees in it, and then the city council does not approve the increase in the fees, a supplemental appropriation would be created to negatively affect the 2019 budget, decrease it, correct? Yes?
Correct.
Thank you. Alderman Solomon, you still have the floor.
Well, thank you. My problem is I don't have enough information. So you know, I have a few questions. What's the total cost to run the department? And it seems to me like we don't have that answer, is what you're telling me, and that's part of the discussion. So whatever figures that we use to figure out this 20%, we need to know that. Another thing I think is good for all of us to hear at the same time, and I'm not sure who to direct this to, if I should direct it to Ken or Dale, whoever has historical knowledge, but just in very simple terms for all of us to make sure we understand, how are we currently calculating building permit fees? We brag about our building permit fees every month about how well we're doing. Does anybody have a clear calculation of how we determine that? Or just some factors? It might be complicated, but I mean... It might be complicated, but I mean, maybe an overview for, for all of the council and the community.
Are you talking about how we come up with each individual building permit amount? Or I, I guess I'm not understanding your question.
Perhaps, you know, from what I understand, we, what, what I've heard is, is two things. I've heard that we are subjective, and that we just let the developer or builder decide. And I've also heard that the staff will come and, and bring those figures to us. And what is the methodology, you know, in, in a general terms? I know every project is different, but is there a methodology at play?
The, the project, and normally, the staff will allow the developer applicant to submit their proposed or projected valuation of the project. And so the building permit is based on 1,000 square feet, so valuation of per 1,000 square feet at a certain rate. And that depends on the classification of the permit as well. If it's single family, or if it's industrial, commercial, there's a lot of different calculations that can apply to that.
Is this an imperfect system? Is this a pretty common, so you've worked in other communities, is this a bad system that we have in place?
No, I don't think it's a bad system. I think the way we calculate our rates has not been fair in relation to inflation and such. So we're severely out of whack, as far as I can see, as to where we should be today. May I almost, or also add, that when we compare ourselves to other communities like Sioux Falls or otherwise, we oftentimes are comparing apples to oranges, because our, the way we calculate our permits and the total fees that we get out of it is not necessarily the same way that Sioux Falls or other locations do, especially when they have other fees on top of the, the basic building permit fee, including inspection fees, which are in Sioux Falls significantly higher than what we have. And if you look at the total picture of building permit fees and building costs for developers pulling a permit, you need to look at more than just the building permit fee. So I think that the way it's been expressed has not been a fair picture.
Okay. So just clarification, where I'm leaning, I feel like the burden of proof is on the city to say why we should increase the rates. I, I don't feel like I have those answers as much as, if things are what they are, why should these rates change? Because ultimately, it's going to not really impact the developers, or the realtors, or the builders, it's going to impact the end user. And I feel like that's the, if we're going to adjust these rates, just like our water rates, we had to have a justification for it, and the burden of proof is on us, say, here's why these rates have to increase. I'm not sure, because we don't even know the total cost to run the department, that we have a clear picture of, of why. So it's tough for me to vote for or against anything right now, because I'm not sure we have all of the, the questions answered. And if I have to go to my default mode, my default mode says, don't raise the rates until I have clear justification to do so, and that includes knowing the cost to run the operation. You know, it can include the inflationary parts of it, it also can include community goals such as affordable housing. Perhaps we discount building permits under a certain amount for affordable homes, that they're actually cheaper than what they are now, but maybe on premium or commercial, they're a little bit more, I don't know. These are just things that, that we haven't really talked through, and so by default, I don't like to raise it until we have really firm grasp of the reason why. I'm not sure that we're there yet, especially knowing that we don't know that the expense of the department is. That could really answer a lot of questions for us. So with that, I'll yield the floor.
Chair recognizes Alderman Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dean Holt, can I ask you a couple of questions, since you're sitting in the audience? And the reason I'm going to ask you these questions, Dean, is because I know that you're building a tremendous amount of homes in Box Elder, but I also know you built quite a few homes in Rapid City on the southeast side. Do you have a rough idea of the difference percentage-wise in cost and building permits between Box Elder and Rapid City?
For the exact same square footage of home, the exact same floor plan of home, my building permits in Box Elder are almost 17% less than they are for the exact same fee in Rapid, for the exact same house in Rapid City. That is the basic building permit fee. That does not include the water fees that are attached to the Rapid City building permit fee, the right-of-way fee, the fire marshal fee, the water fee, the sewer fee. There are, my last permit that I pulled was just last week, and my basic permit in Rapid City for a home was, the building permit was all, was right around $1,300. My total building permit fee was almost $2,400 because of all of these secondary fees that are attached to it. So to answer your question shortly, between Box Elder, where we build, what have we done, 20 homes in the last year, and Rapid City, where we've done six, the exact same house I've built in both locations, and the building permit fee schedule is almost 17% less.
I think that answers a few of our questions, or it should. And that's one of the reasons, you know, and you're only talking $3,000 or $4,000, but $3,000 or $4,000, I mean, in price, once you're, you, you have that home priced. Or a little more, because of the cost of land in Box Elder's cheaper than in Rapid City, too. But anytime you add to that, anytime we add to that, we are losing people to Box Elder, we are losing people to Somerset, we're losing people to Hermosa, we're losing people, you know, and that's one thing I just want to, and, and don't take this the wrong way, I want to beat this into this council's head. We've talked about affordable housing ever since I've got on this council, but we really don't do anything about it. We're all talk, and we're no work. You know, we, we talk about it, but then we turn around, we, we raise fees. You know, I know it was important that we, that we did the, the soil testing, you know, that was important, but that added thousands of dollars to a lot in, in Rapid City. I mean, there was ways that we could have, could have made that work a little bit better, and maybe we can revisit that sometime. But you know, a lot of these things, I think that we need to revisit, but we also don't need to be adding onto it. You know, with the numbers we're given here, and I don't know what's going to happen with the numbers, I don't know what's going to happen with the numbers coming in, you know, they may be completely different. But with the numbers that I asked for, revenues and expenses, and if I just take these numbers at face value, we are already generating more money than it takes to run that department. And that's without all the secondary fees that he's talking about, because all of those secondary fees add up to $718,000 in the 2017 budget. And you know, yes, some of those are split between fire department, some of them are split, you know, but the inspectors that are in this building, electrical, plumbing, mechanical, the ones that are in here, that's going into their revenue. And I can tell you, out of the last building permit that I pulled, the fire department part of it was about 15%. So, you know, I, maybe 10, I don't know, I'd have to actually calculate a little more. But it wasn't a huge amount, because it was just the inspection fee on that one. So, you know, I, and I didn't make my motion, but I keep going out, I'll go out, and I'll come back in if nobody else is coming in.
Thank you, Alderman Roberts. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Drew.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to make a motion to change this building permit discussion to November, and move it out of this discussion because of expediency and lack of information.
Yeah, Alderwoman Drew, could you clarify, because we're talking about the 2019 budget?
Yes, okay.
So are you removing it from the budget?
I believe the mayor said that that was, would be possible to do that, if I understood him correctly, that was what he wanted, you know, he said we could do that at a later time?
No, what the mayor suggested is that we, he's recommending that we pass his budget as presented, and then if the fee structure that is, comes before us in November does not pass the city council, a supplemental appropriation for the 2019 budget would be created to decrease the 2019 budget at that time.
Okay, I, I stick with my motion then, I'd like to see this moved to November and take it out of the budget at this time, because I just don't think we have the information to make this kind of decision. So that's my motion.
I just want to clarify, Alderwoman Drew, Pauline, do we have to identify the offsetting expense department at least, or can we just send this back, that we want this removed and send it back to the department heads and the mayor to?
Nope, you need to tell us which department or program you want to reduce the funding from.
All right, I'm going to withdraw my motion, because I didn't think that through. So I'm just going to withdraw it, and we'll just go on with our budget discussion.
Thank you. Alderwoman Drew, if you want to think about it and, and revamp that, you can come back into the queue?
I will.
All right. Chair would like to recognize Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair, and Alderwoman Drew, I appreciate you going down the rabbit hole that I threw myself down as well. So, but the intention is right, and I appreciate that, and I think we need to take greater control of what's happening here, and that is part of what you're saying and what I have said about the interdepartmental charges with the water rate fee increase. We need to make sure these come back to us, we need to hold ourselves accountable to make sure that we get these items on the agenda, specifically this one as well, because I agree with Mr. Roberts that we need to look at the numbers, we need to understand specifically, because we really don't know specifically. Because I, I know for a fact Sioux Falls, we, I, I'm trying to remember, we had an event down in Sioux Falls, and we met with some of the Sioux Falls council this last year.
Of Dakota Municipal League.
The Municipal League, thank you very much. And I had some sidebar conversations with some of their council, the, because they're doing some things in their housing, that we were trying to figure out how they support it, which is like ridiculously expensive, because they take condemned homes, they rehab them, they resell them, but they actually pay the owners of the home at the time, some reduced value, obviously, but we were trying to understand how they were able to fund those, that project. Sioux Falls has an untold number of other fees, and I don't know, Mr. Roberts, if you have them all, maybe you do. But they have an untold number of fees, it's, it was sobering to understand the myriad of fees outside of just building permits. But anyway, I'm hoping that that's what comes forward as we visit these particular discussions, and this one being the, the property tax. And I agree with the mayor that we can visit these items, and we just need to have the fortitude to make sure that we make the right decision. It really comes down to that. I don't think there's a political equation being played here, that we pass his budget, and he's like thinking, well, it's going to be very politically hard for them to now pull it back. I don't feel that way at all, and I hope my fellow council members don't feel that way at all as well. I think we need to do what is right with all of the information, which is the problem that we have right now. So I'm looking forward to the discussion as we get into the further months. I yield.
Chair recognizes Alderwoman Modrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that this council's intention is going in the right path, and the mayor presented now several weeks ago, based on the direction I think we're now headed, without the motion. And that was, just as Alderman Laurenti said, we can move this budget forward, but we can analyze this. We do have some data, but we don't have enough data, and really make the determination, because there's numbers flying around, but I think we'll get true numbers if we defer this to whether it comes to us in November or October, but I think we can proceed forward, because we still have the numbers of the previous year that would move forward as well. So if this decreases by the 200,000, I think it's generating, if there's an increase, then I think we can handle that. I, I think we've got the, the differential already in play. So this was good conversation, I think we can move past this item, and know that we do need to revisit it, because it may not have an increase, although it does state it hasn't been touched in 25 years, I think there's more information to come out of that statement as well. And the timeline isn't for now, anyway, so this is, this is the time to move it forward, and perhaps we can go on to the next item, and that would be certainly what, it's too late for me to make that motion to acknowledge, but I would entertain it. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm still going to make the motion that we take this $200,000 out. I have a feeling that I probably won't get a second, and I, even if I do, I probably won't get it passed, but I'm going to make the motion.
Well, prior before asking a second, identify the expense.
Well, we've got a, a very large department that it's already in. What is Ken's, Pauline, what's Ken's budget this year, and how much did it go up?
Sorry. Don't do that. Don't do that.
He has multiple org codes, do you want the one specific to building inspections?
No, because that's a little too small. What's, he doesn't just have a general fund for the entire, for community development, it's all into different codes?
It is, it comprises grants, but overall, what the mayor presented, I'm just looking at Alderwoman Drew's thing here, for community development, I believe that's the correct department, correct? Community development, it says that the 2018 was, I'm rounding, 2.6 million, and for 2019, it's almost 3 million, and had a 12.6% increase, but there is an asterisk next to it, it probably refers to grants and stuff, but...
That's possible, but you can spread it out within community development.
All right, so your motion is to remove from the budget the revenue source of fee in, building fee increases?
Of the fee increase.
And have the expenses adjusted in the community development budget.
Budget, absolutely.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
I've got a second for discussion. Alderman Roberts, you still have the floor.
Thank you very much. Now, one thing I find very interesting about this conversation is how much we're talking about how little information we have. I find that very interesting. I think there should have been a lot more information on a lot of different things, and, you know, that we're talking about passing a budget because we don't have enough information. Shouldn't it be the city's responsibility to provide that information, that they need to increase this? Instead of, you know, instead of us waiting to get this information, you know, I mean, we could raise it in November, we could raise it in December, if those numbers are correct, if we're not generating too much money. And wouldn't it be easier to do it that way than after the fact, come in and, and if we do have to cut it, cut it? Because, you know, one of the things that worries me is, once you budget something, typically, you don't cut it, you find somewhere else to fund it out of. And I don't want to see us doing a supplemental appropriation and saying, well, maybe we have a little more tax revenue coming in, or maybe we have, you know, whatever. So I would like to see this come out, I would like to see the city prove to the residents and the home builders that they're actually not generating enough money to run this department, rather than the people out there that are doing the work, you know, having to come in and, and basically, they're the ones that have to prove it. You know, even though the city's going to run up their numbers, you know, what if they don't agree with those numbers? What if they, you know, I mean, I'm not saying anything would be padded, but I am saying that, you know, I've got different numbers than Pauline gave us. You know, there are a lot of different things that you have to look at. What's going to come in? Is every single fee that goes through that department going to come in? Are there some that aren't going to be put in there? So, you know, it's 2, it's $200,000, 200 and what? What's the actual number on this, Pauline? I can't remember the actual one.
203, 280.
203, 280. You know, but really, bottom line is, this is really bad way to budget. You don't budget for something that you don't have. We wouldn't do this in our personal life. We wouldn't budget for something and say, well, you know, possibly, you know, I'm going to sell this in the future, possibly. You know, or possibly, I'm going to do this, or possibly, I'm going to get a raise, or possibly, you know, and, and this is what we're talking about with interdepartmental charges. You know, we don't know what those numbers are, just like this, we don't know what the actual numbers are. But, you know, I find it interesting that this number is put on our website, this number says all of the fees that are generated from building permits, you know, and if that's the true number, that's a million dollars higher than Pauline says the expenses in this department are, or roughly. So, anyway, and then we can pat another 200,000 onto that. Thank you.
Chair would like to recognize Alderwoman Modrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's the difficult part about budgeting, is it's always forecasting, and you, you try to forecast and, and hope that the event happens in the end, and we and you try to forecast and, and hope that the event happens in the end, and we work real hard to do so. But I know with our permit fee analysis, as well as the mayor's discussion on it, I'm going to ask for the permission to bring him on, because I know he's here. But we do have some information. One of them was that most projects will see a fee decrease of 92% based on past five years, and that we haven't had an increase in 25 years. And I'm not in favor, in particular, of permit fee increases unless it's justified. So with that, I think we're all in the same direction on that. We don't, we don't want to build something that, that it's not time to do so. And, and I would hope that we're going in the right path. And in the mayor's previous presentation, it was that we could move this forward, and we, I think we're stuck, but maybe he's gonna have another statement here to help us get through this, because we do need to move the budget forward, and we also need to analyze our permit fees and who it's going to hit. And as Councilman Solomon said, we know the end user is who it's going to hit. And if the structure, and I remember seeing something on it, maybe it was 145 or 165, but the number was where affordable housing is, before it actually generates, where it will hit the bank and then they cannot afford it. So we do have to be careful that we also know where our scale is. We know what our affordable numbers are. We talked about that at Public Works. So that's important as well, too, when we're analyzing this. We did a study when we did the water rates, and perhaps it's time for this as well. But I'd like to defer, if I could, to the mayor. I'm sure he's got some information on this, if I could.
Mayor Alderwoman Modric would like to give you an opportunity to add to the discussion. Any comments?
Sure. I just came out because I believe I heard a motion to take away the 203,000 in revenue and reduce expenses in community development department to compensate for it.
That is correct. That's the motion on the floor.
Okay. I just wanted to explain the asterisk. When I presented this budget, I mentioned that the $330,000 increase in community development is directly related to one item, and that is a transportation grant from the federal government in that amount. So the revenue comes in for that amount, and then in order to spend it, the expenses are raised by that amount. So this community development department is at a flat, same budget as 2018. And just wanted to make that clear in case you didn't.
Thank you, Mayor, for that explanation of the asterisk. Alderwoman Modric, you still have the floor?
Thank you. So Mayor, it's flat. So if we proceeded forward in a motion in the direction that it's going in, it flattens it for 2019. We have some others where we've had some decreases, some pretty healthy ones. And some of the other budgets are nominal and increased. So will that still give community development the budget that they need regardless of the fund of 235,000 coming in?
I don't believe so. I had the opportunity to be with all of these general fund department directors while they were looking for money to trim their requests down as much as possible. And it was a painstaking proposition. I can predict with great confidence that a budget reduction of that magnitude can only be made up in personnel, whether it's furloughs, or layoffs, or reduction in staff, which then would need to be accompanied by a policy decision on what we intend to deregulate, or how we intend to change that department. I really believe that. And I know that that sounds like some, it always sounds like someone like me would be trying to hold someone like you hostage over a threat of firing somebody. But we were there together looking for 3,000 more dollars, and then 2,000, and so on. And so these department directors are all proud executives who want to run their department in the best way possible. And I believe they've made the reductions in their requests to be able to provide the basic bare minimum rate of service.
And if I could, and I, I wanna say thank you. I don't think that's been done publicly. Maybe it has. But I wanna say thank you for presenting to us what I do consider a balanced budget. We did not hit a restricted or an undesigned cash. And we do have to offset with the motion that we have if it goes forward. So there's, there's really no other direction it needs to go into, I think, except for the community department, community development, where it's sitting at the 12.6, which this reduction would make it a zero. There's, there's no other offset that really makes sense to your motion that I can see. And with the compliment, what I wanna say is we're also using tools that we, we haven't had in the past, that we've had the privilege to use to make this budget happen in its entirety. And that is priority-based budgeting, functioning as we had bought it to do. This was the year where we actually swapped quartiles, and we saw department heads and enterprise departments working very hard to move those quartiles to where the primaries are and eliminate. And if I remember right, there was 1,300 sitting out there, and it got down to 800 before it even came before us. So there's been a lot of accomplishment there. We also have a budget analysis being done by somebody that's actually trained to analyze a budget. We're a fortunate city to have that. And I don't know if Sean is still here or not, but, but that's where these, these are tools. These are tools that have fine-tuned this budget and have, have made it very satisfactory. And we can dig in the weeds as deep as we wanna go, but if the end result is, we're probably come back, gonna come back to this presentation. And this is a solid budget. I, I think it's good. I think if, in fact, we pass it with the, with the permits in there, I'm like Alderman Roberts, I want it analyzed. I don't want it to just be rubber stamped. And I don't know where that guarantee would come unless it was from this motion. And, Mr. Mayor, unless you can tell me that there's another way to get around it, I'd like to hear that part, because how else are we gonna move this budget forward?
Well, my, again, my purpose for coming out was to specifically address that motion, which included taking all of that, those expenses out of one department. I think it's possible, if it's the council's wishes, to at this point, do away with the extra 203,000 revenue. I think it's possible that we could find a way to do that citywide that would not involve laying off staff or taking away from the most used services. But, so I would just wanna clarify that. Taking it from one department's gonna be big consequences for that department.
But we have to have the offset in the motion.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we're getting, as a city council, we're getting two different directions. So the city finance officer, who is ultimately has to prepare the budget, told us that the city council has to at least narrow down to a department where the expenses should be cut from. So I'm looking, well, the city attorney is no longer in the room again. So I guess, Pauline, I, the mayor is suggesting, suggesting that the city council simply state what we want the revenue source to be reduced by if we're not in agreement at this time, and that we would send it back to the mayor and the department heads to redo the budget based on the revenue set by city council. And just as I say that, thank you, Joel, for coming back in. The city attorney is also here. So, Pauline, for first, would you like to address?
I can. Technically, once the mayor presents the budget to you guys and hands it over, it's your job then to make the changes, make it balance, bring it forward for approval, that type of thing. If the mayor wants to take that on, and you want him to do it, that's, that's his prerogative.
You're just gonna wash your hands of it, aren't you?
No, I'll still be involved, but I'm not gonna argue with him. If he wants to take that on as the head administrator for the city, then that's what he can do.
Thank you. At this time, Joel, since you did come back in, can we get a legal opinion of what the city council must make in a motion to adjust the budget at this time? Do we, does a city council, if they are going to reduce revenues, have to identify a specific expense account or a department? Or can the city council take the prerogative of just pushing it back to the mayor and department heads to find the reduction in expenses as the city council approves the revenues?
You know, legally, I liked Pauline's answer. I don't think the mayor's presented you his budget. And if he wants to choose to do that, and I mean, look, it's a tough position, because he's already spent a lot of time before he presented it to you, trying to trim where he could trim. So on the one hand, it would be helpful if you gave us some guidance on where to trim. On the other hand, you don't have the budget in detail or have access to the staff. So to some degree, we would probably prefer to have some input into that versus you just slashing it. But if you were to tell the mayor, cut 200,000 more from the budget, I don't know that legally he's required to do it. He could tell you, I couldn't find it. At the end of the day, when you approve it, it needs to balance. So if the mayor and the department directors haven't cut it, you'll have to cut it. Or you'll have to have the revenue in there. But you could certainly, I think, as Pauline said, ask the mayor and the department directors to do it. And if they are willing to do that and bring you back a revised budget minus the, the revenue, there is nothing illegal about that. They could do that.
Thank you. So I'd like to turn back, oh, next in queue, Alder.
Chair, I wanted to finish one more statement off of that. Thank you. And that was that, it just came back in a circle to us, back to a motion that we have to make a decision on. And so does the same also say that since he's put the association with community development as the target for the wash, to wash it, then so can't we also bring that before us? And if community development's 200,000 loss is so great, then the mayor and the departments come back to us to bring it back in if they did find another area to, to spread the money out? I mean, if we vote this now, then we can still contingently change this in the future, anyway.
So I think what your question is, and if I'm wrong, I'm sure Pauline will buzz in, but if today, for your purposes of your motion, you say we're taking 200,000 out of community development, then over the next few months, as you're working through the, the building inspection fees, if you decide that 200,000, when it, you see what that's actually gonna look like, you decide that's too severe, you could then do a supplementary budget for next year and spread that loss out among other departments, or do that so by the first of the year, it's, it all balances. And I believe the answer to that is yes.
Thank you. That was my answer. Thank you, Madam Chair, for letting me be, jump back in there.
Thank you. And then Alderman Roberts is currently in the queue, and I would like to first pose a question to you. Alderman Roberts, do you want your motion to stand with identifying a department, or do you want to amend your motion?
Yes, I would like to make an amendment that we send back this 203,280 if this motion passes to the mayor to adjust it amongst all the city departments.
Or at.
At his discretion.
At his discretion.
If he's willing to do that, if it goes back to him.
Mayor, are you.
Take it out of the city council budget.
Well, I think.
We don't make anything already, so it doesn't make any difference.
I, I don't think you're gonna find this amount in the city council budget. So Alderman Roberts, so you do wanna make an amendment that you're still want to remove the building fee revenue increase as presented?
Yes.
Offer that the mayor has an opportunity to identify where those cuts will be done within the, well, within his budget.
Within his budget.
Within his budget. I'm not gonna say citywide, so within his budget. And then, and bring that to first reading? First reading is Tuesday night.
No, first reading's tomorrow.
Oh. Oh, first reading, well, I'm thinking city council, first, first reading city council, Tuesday. Is that when you want it?
I would love to have that done. I don't think that's possible to do.
Well, we won't be able to approve the budget until we get an answer. So Mayor, Mayor, the question is, can you have a recommendation of these cuts by Tuesday, or will you need until second reading? If the motion passes? Do you need until second reading?
Second reading.
Okay, second reading. So is, and so Alderman Roberts?
I'm fine with that.
All right. So just so we understand the motion, the motion is still to cut the building permit fees of, I wrote it down someplace, 203,280, and for the mayor to bring forth the cuts, you need a second reading for final approval by city council. Alderman Roberts, you still have the floor?
I'm down.
Chair recognizes Alderman Laurenti.
And I think I seconded that, so I'm okay with that as well.
Oh, thank you.
Nobody asked me.
Yeah, I didn't ask you, so.
I'm not offended.
Thank you for clarifying that. The seconder is in agreement with the amended motion.
And the reason I seconded that is the gut feeling I had when I ran down the rabbit hole, like Alderwoman Drew did with her particular subject, agenda item. And that is, I don't know if I said it or not, but what really bothers me about city budgets, and they, I've been on the council for a long time, is that, one, we can't get the votes to hold the budget to a true balanced budget, much like we tried last year. But it's always after the fact. And that's what we're doing here, is we are being presented a budget that is based on not just future projections. I get revenue projections. We can't be sure about those things, and we can't be sure about some of the fee revenue generation. I hear that. But I know that we do use models that are predictive, whether it's the last five years, whatever it is. It should be conservative, and that the budget should not rely on, honestly, and this is just for one department, this is a large increase, much like the CPI. It's a large, they're large increases. This is a large increase. Hopefully, those revenues will come in, and it's based on builders paying more for fees. But it bothers me. That's what, is at the, the very epitome of my feeling about seconding this, is that we are put in a position, almost every year since I've been on the council, to spend money, whether it be undesigned cash, or some future projection of revenue, whether it be property taxes, or sales tax, or undesigned cash, which we've run out of, because honestly, our budgets are still exceeding even those costs which are included in the budgets. And we are doing nothing about it. Every year, we sit up here during our budget hearings, and we have this argument about whether we should be including some type of revenue that is just being pulled out of the sky. Now, it's, it's more than that. I've used that as a word, you know, a figure, a figure of words. I can't even think of the right words. There we go. So it's very frustrating. It's frustrating because we can't get the votes to hold a really hard conservative budget based on really good projections that are really solid, that are being presented to us at budget time. And I understand, you know, the mayor, every mayor that we've dealt with, in this particular case, when we're talking about this particular item, it's the same story every time, but it's just a different area. And it's, the only way it's gonna change is for this council to make the changes. We have to stop arguing for this kind of budgeting. It's irresponsible. It really is. Nobody in their right mind would budget like this, and government doesn't get a special pass for it. There's no reason for, for government to get a special pass. In my opinion, we should be running every department as an enterprise fund. It should be run like private. It really should be. You know, we should have balance sheets. We should have things where we have expenses, and we have revenues, and we, I understand we're basing it on projections, which is a little bit different. But so does private business. They're projecting. There's no way a private business gets away with this kind of budgeting. No way! They're out of business. It's over. We can't allow it. And this council has to start exercising its power. And when we send this budget back, if we need to send it back and this passes, the mayor's office is going to do this. This is a directive from the council. When the council unanimously speaks, it's gonna happen. I would, I would agree that maybe we should give some general description of, if this passes, that it be taken from non-discretionary or discretionary spending, just so that we make sure. And I'm sure the mayor would probably do that regardless, because it would be a no-brainer. You aren't gonna go into non-discretionary spending. You're gonna go into discretionary spending first. Otherwise, I'll be the first one to criticize going after non-discretionary spending when we've got all kinds of discretionary money going out to untold numbers of, I yield.
Chair would like to recognize Alderwoman Drewry.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I would like to thank the mayor for taking the bow by the horns and going back and looking at the budget if this motion passes. And I would like to see this motion pass, because to me, it's voting on an unknown. And I would rather vote for a budget that's firm than one that
And I would rather vote for a budget that's firm than one that I don't understand. This $203,000, I don't understand it. And I don't think most of us up here really understand where those fees are coming from, or how they're calculated, or why. And I would rather vote on a solid basis than on something I'm unsure of. So I would encourage council members to just go ahead and pass this motion, and then in November, or wherever, if once that's all solidified, and then we can see, well, maybe it's just $100,000, or maybe it's $50,000, or maybe it's 10. But at least the numbers would be more solidified, and we would understand. And we could go ahead and, you know, give some leniency for affordable housing, and we could do things like that, but not during budget time. So I would, I'd just thank the mayor for taking the, just being willing to consider finding that $200,000, and I would encourage people to vote for it. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just very quick, I appreciate the mayor working on this in good faith. I think sometimes you can't have politics at play where you have a mayor and a council who are at odds, and the mayor's like, well, I'll show them where I'll put this $203,000. I'll take it out of the police. How can they say no to police? I don't see that he's going to play politics like that. I believe he's going to be a better team player. Like, this is how we've been able to get a lot done the last, the last few years. I believe that he'll, he'll do a good job of, since we are giving this back to him, this shows some level of trust on our part, rather than us just cherry picking what we think. And I believe the mayor has shown good faith in the past that he'll come back. And we may not agree, here's the problem, folks, is he's going to come back with $203,280 reduction somewhere, and it's going to make some of you mad. Maybe me. And we're going to have to live with that. And that's, that's the balance that we're going to have to take. We don't get to make up money out of the clear blue sky. We have to only spend what we take in. And so that's the arrangement, and that's the agreement we have with the mayor here. And I don't know what kind of squabble we're going to have when this comes back to us over that amount of money, but I will just say that we have to have in good faith, we have to work together, and we have to understand sacrifices have to be made. And, and I'll leave it at that. I'll have some other comments for another item later on, but that, that's something we're going to have to remember. Somewhere, something has to sacrifice that we love, so that we do the things that we have to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And just for clarification, Alderman Solomon, because you kind of alluded to it in your statement there, the motion, if passes, is for the mayor to bring back recommended cuts. The council still has final vote for second reading on where those cuts will actually, and I'm sure that's why the mayor will make sure that he doesn't cut it into discretionary, because it'll just open up a debate.
He's smart enough to know that we still have to vote on it. He's a smart man, and he's been in this a lot longer than all of us have, being a police chief and everything else. So he knows that it still has to come to us. That's why I know he'll do it in good faith. And I'm warning us that there are going to be some sacred cows that we may have to slaughter.
Oh, that's going to make the media, that was-
That was pretty harsh.
That was bad.
But what I mean is there are things that you love that may, that may have to be reduced. How about that? That's a better way of saying it.
Chair would like to pause on that one and recognize Alderwoman Armstrong.
All right, thank you. First and foremost, I think we really need to understand the amount of work that the mayor put into this budget. And I think he's been working on this since early spring, and also involving Mrs. Sumption and Mr. Kurbanoff, and also the department directors. I think if there was $200,000 that could have been cut, he would have found, or they collectively would have found it. And piggybacking off of what Mr. Solomon said, my fear is these cuts are going to affect things that I hold near and dear. The library, the arts, parks and rec, as well as the essentials of what we need. So I'm very leery about this motion. I have full faith in our leaders and our department heads, and I just really feel that if there, if there was some wiggle room, they would have found it. And I don't know if we're going to know anymore in November than we know now. And a point that Mr. Laurenti made a little bit earlier about holding us more accountable, or we should run this more like a private business, and the finance department should be able to provide spreadsheets, I see these spreadsheets. You provide them. We have our checks and balances. If I ever ask for anything, you provide it. You know, where are we up? Where are we down? So I don't want to downplay the role that you play, because I depend on you, very much so. So that's the point I wanted to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. I do support the item primarily because of the fact that we need to hold the line on this type of budgeting. This is, this is how the council sends the right message to the people who actually do the budget. The council sends it back and says, find this in most likely non-discretionary spending would be my recommendation. This is how we shape the budget process, because we, most of us, it's very difficult to get involved in the budget process very, very early, when the mayor is trying to do it. How that would even work with 10 different council members with all of our different schedules to get involved at the beginning of the budget cycle, to me seems harrowing. And this is, this is really our opportunity to shape the budget. This is our opportunity to say, this is not the way we want the city to budget. This isn't, this isn't difficult. This isn't difficult for us to do this. It does take some fortitude. It does take some political will to say, even though you're a city government, or a state government, or a federal government, we don't believe this is the proper way to budget. And the way that we do that is with our votes and what we're doing tonight with our budget hearings. Until the budget hearings and the process changes, this is when we do it. So this isn't something that is bad that we're doing. This isn't bad at all. This is part of the process. And so we need to stand up and do the right thing, and, and we'll make a decision. There's nothing that's going to be hurt here when the mayor brings it back to us, and we still have to make a decision as a council. But this is how we shape how the people who actually do the budget for next year, because they're like, I don't think we're going to include those revenues next year without knowing specifically all of the numbers 1, 2, 3, and 4, and A, B, C, and D. But when we just keep passing these budgets without sending them back and saying, find a way to not spend this money that you don't have, that's what's going to happen. I yield.
Chair recognizes Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam President. I see Pauline carrying her laptop around. Do you have any additional comments to make before I make a comment or two?
Not at this time. Mr. Laurenti had asked me to bring the other items up on the screen after this.
Thank you. I'm not comfortable with the motion either. The reason I'm saying that is because, as Alderman Solomon said earlier, we don't have enough information. And Alderman Laurenti is correct on the fees that Sioux Falls does. Alderman Roberts is correct on the data that he presented for comparisons with Rapid City and Box Elder. But I want to know, how does the city of Rapid City fit in that comparisons? Is, is, are we really charging way too much now? Or why do we have to increase the, the permit fees? And how do we stack up regionally with other cities of comparable size? Because anecdotally, what I'm hearing is that there isn't as much oversight in Box Elder, so that that's the reason why they can cut some of the costs out there. Sioux Falls has some other extenuating services that they bring forward, that they are able to do affordable housing. They are able to do historical housing and facades to their historical districts. So I, I'm just not prepared to make a decision right now on, on making any slashes or any more cuts to the budget on this, because personally, I just don't have enough information. And I would like to have some additional comparisons as well. So I can't support the motion at this time. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderwoman Modric.
To complement what Councilman Nordstrom said, we still have a number of items ahead. Another one that's going to hit us very shortly here is CPI, which is another over $200,000. I think the discussion's going to flip the other way. So with that in mind, that would leave us with $500,000 that we're going to be throwing at the mayor. And that is of a concern to me. And I think, thank you, Mr. Nordstrom, because I think my light bulb went off, that I want to move forward on this budget. I think we can still work out the details, as it's been given to us, that we are not in a time crunch of the permits. I think there's a process we're going to have to go through on that, and it may end up being balancing in the favor of the permit process, the permitees that get the process. But I think the best thing to do is continue to move this forward as it is. We've got a lot of decreases that have hit our immediate departments, as well as our community investments. And those are investments that we are responsible to take care of. So the slashing and gashing could, could really come back and bite us if we don't move this budget forward, since it's already been so well-fintuned, and then have the discussion of the item, which is on permits. And I don't think I can support the motion. My mind has changed. Thank you.
I currently have no one else in the queue. We do have a motion on the floor. The motion is to reduce the 2019 budget revenue stream of building permits, the $203,280, and request that the mayor bring back recommended cuts of 200, $203,280, as he offered to do before the city council budget hearing number two tonight. That is a motion on the floor. We do have a second by Laurenti. Motion was made by Alderman Roberts. All in favor?
Aye.
Heidi, let's just do a roll call. Scott.
Aye.
Drew. Nordstrom. Modric. Solomon.
Aye.
Armstrong.
Aye.
Laurenti.
Aye.
Drury.
Aye.
Roberts.
Aye.
Motion passes five to four. Thank you. And I've had a request to take a recess, or a break, a 10-minute break. But before I do that, next on the agenda are going to be some information that was requested. Item number four is the last five years budgets with percentage of increase and decrease. Item number five is the historical property tax revenue, and item number six is the historical sales tax revenue. And I believe item number eight, Alderman Solomon, I want to clarify, was more of a discussion of if cuts are taken to see where additional alterations to the budget. I'm hoping that we can roll all of those up with item number seven, which is the discussion of the CPI. If any council member has an objection, I'd like to hear from them now. If not, when we come back, I would like to take items four through eight as a discussion topic in totality. We'll start with the information being presented. Is that acceptable? Prior to asking for a break, I see the mayor raising his hand, shaking his finger. He might be doing either one. So Mayor, do you have additional comment?
Yeah, just a, just a quick comment. This seemed logical to me, to deliberate and judge the budget issue and the building permit issue separately. So the fact that that didn't work out that way, that's my fault. I saw that in a way completely opposite of the way this council sees it. So for that reason, I will go back and tend to the budget some more. I do want to point out, though, this was an extraordinary year in doing the budget. And, you know, it was me a few years ago, two, three years ago, that said, here's a slide depicting how much undesignedated cash we were using, and we need to start trimming this back down to zero. And I committed at that time to have a stair step for two years to get half as much and then zero. I just want to say, I'm on board with that, and I always have been on board with that. In amongst this discussion here tonight, and in the budget season, there are really more policy issues at stake than the numbers that appear on the page. And it's really, we're trying to find out how to work together on this whole budget process. I have provided the council with a ream of paper with fine details. You didn't like that. Provided you with less details. Now you wish you had more. I kept you completely out of it. You wanted in. I invited you in. Now you didn't take me up on, I mean, so this is just like any other relationship, I imagine, that we're just trying to find how to work together. But on this issue of the reduction of another $203,000, I'll need some input from the council offline, at the very least, about weighing the city's priorities and that sort of thing, because there's a policy issue here. And at the other end, at the other end of this whole discussion, are 75,000 people who are asking us for more, more, more. That's the issue here that I face, and that's why I think it's appropriate to have interaction with the council on these type of decisions. So I'll be calling or emailing, and I hope you can take me up on my invitation to participate in this upcoming discussion. And by the way, the, everything I do with the budget is reduced to, I mean, it is two finger punching numbers into a spreadsheet or things of that nature. The genius behind the, what makes it all work, and Pauline will tell you, I take a mess of things to her, and I say, this is what I have, and she turns it into a city budget. Pauline and Tracy and the finance department, they do this. We have Sean for these complicated things that we have not really delved into before, different forecasting methods, and trying to tweak some of the behind-the-scenes issues coming to this table. But our finance officer is the chief budget authority from the mayor's office. I'm just the mouthpiece at this stage. So I'm going to go back to work and enjoy your break. Thank you.
Thank you. So we are going to take a 10-minute break and pick up back up with a discussion of items four through eight. Thank you, everyone.
... If I can get city council members to resume their seats, I'm going to go ahead and call this back in session.
This will be the highest.
We're back in session, and we will go ahead and start the discussion on items four through eight. Item number four on the agenda is the last five years budgets with percentage of increase and decrease. Item number five is historical property tax revenue. Item number six is historical sales tax revenue. Item number seven is a discussion if the CPI should be taken. And item number eight is the discussion of additional alterations to the budget. Just for clarification, that, that agenda item was a discussion on our first budget hearing that was saying something to the effect of, um, all participants that get tax money or get revenue from the city or a subsidy from the city should partake of any actual cuts that are offered up. That was the point of that discussion. So we're going to roll those all up into this item of discussion. Uh, I believe we will start with Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair, for that. Yes, I'd like to get the conversation started, and I believe it's best to handle these all, if you will, together. So Pauline has, uh, her fingertips ready. Um, we can pull up, um, four, five, six, or seven, I think, depending on where the co- the conversation goes, um, or your questions. Um, Pauline doesn't have any presentation. I just wanted her to be able to present, uh, these different items as we work through the discussion. Because in my opinion, and this was, uh, if you remember last year's budget, um, I had Pauline provide the same numbers as far as, um, historical property tax revenue, uh, growth and historical sales tax growth. So, Pauline, if you want to go back to, to the five years budgets. I don't like that one. But anyway, just looking at 15, 16, 17, uh, 218, it looks like we have near, well, it looks like about 12, a total percentage increase of about, I guess I'd have to divide the figures, but just adding up the percentages, you're about 12.4, which is not the correct way to do it. But it's still a little, it might be a little above that, around 12.4%. Um, can you go to, and that's the general budget, if I remember right? The top figure, Pauline, is the general budget? Okay. So can we go to sales tax and property tax revenues?
They're on two separate spreadsheets, so here's sales tax.
Right. So, so sales tax for the same years that I just identified, would we look at 15, 16, 17? We don't have the final figures for 18, right? So we can't talk really about that. But if we just bounce back to 14, 15, 16, and 17, you can see where's, show me, Pauline, where the, the inc- okay. So the increases, so 14, 15, 16, we have, even if you count all of those, I don't think we get anywhere. We're fairly close, but the bottom line is, is we're outspending in our budgets what we're, we're getting in revenues. So, Pauline, what is the calculation when we do the budget? I- is it based on a 2% growth, or have we changed that? It used to be 2% back?
Well, actually, historically, it's been anywhere from a 2 plus 2%. Um, it's been 1.1%, depending on where our, we're at at the time. It's also been as high as 4, uh, plus 4. Um, this year, Sean has actually found a, um, model to track our sales tax. And so I believe it was a little over 5% total over 2017 actual as was budgeted for 19. He updates that, that percentage monthly, but that was at, when we created the budget, that was the percentage. I can't remember it right off my head. I think I... It's 5.34% of 2007, um, increase. So that'd be a little more than 2% a year on average if you, over the two years. Um, otherwise, it's usually about a 4.04% or something like that over two years.
So can you show property tax revenue? All right, thank you. So, so 14, 15, 16, 17, we can see there, but if we look at the percentage increases with the budget, we're outspending our revenues. Our revenues aren't bad. Just remember, our federal government is doing backflips right now for, this is GDP. It's not a direct, uh, comparison, but they're doing backflips because our growth, our GDP growth is over 4%. Revenue growth over 4% on the average is extremely good as well. So if you look at property tax revenue, we're near that, except for 2000, and I think our lowest years were 15, I guess, and last, in 17. Go back to sales tax revenue, if you would, Pauline. So our increases in sales tax revenue outside of 2009, but if you remember, if you do remember back to last year, even with 2009, the percentage increases in property tack, or sales tax revenue, which is our largest stream of revenue in the general fund, the percentage of growth is over 4%. Very, very healthy. The problem is not revenue. That's the whole point. The problem is not revenue. I mean, if you want to spend more money than you're taking in, in revenue growth, um, then yes, you can increase taxes, which is the discussion for item number seven. But my contention, which is the same as it was last year, is that we do not have a revenue problem. And if you ever hear that from a city official, they're wrong. Tell them to refer to this presentation. I don't know if we're going to post this. I think we did last year.
The, the actual attachments are already posted.
Very good.
On the agenda, so...
So, point them to that because the reality is revenues are very good. Anybody who's arguing that our revenues are, are, on the average, very low is not true. All we're doing is spending more than the very generous growth that we're getting on the average. And maybe we need to have better projection models, but I don't think that's the particular case. I think that will help. I think that'll help us be more accurate. But the reality is, is that we are just spending more than we're getting. And what we're getting is very generous. And so to item number seven, I'm hoping my council members will consider these particular items, especially given the fact that we're increasing water revenue or we're increasing water fees. We're projecting at least, I mean, we're going to send it back on building permit fees. This is stuff we're already going to be putting on the taxpayers. So in my opinion, I believe tonight would be the time to send the CPI back along with the fees, building per- permit fees, and allow the mayor to work both of those and provide feedback to us among a myriad of different, uh, budget areas where we don't have to pass these additional costs on top of some of the increases we're already have approved to be put on the, the, the property tax owners and the citizens of Rapid City.
And so, that way, you could amend the second reading if needed to reduce it by the CPI.
Reflect the vote whichever way it goes. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Chair, we'd like to recognize Alderwoman Modric.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to accept the CPI as it was presented in the budget.
One second.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Modric to accept or leave the 2019 budget as presented by the mayor that includes the CPI. And I've got a second by Nordstrom. Alderwoman Modric, you still have the floor?
Thank you. I don't think we should consider a CPI as a devalued way of a funding source. We're always searching for funding sources, this is one of them. It is a piece of the Consumer Price Index or cost of living. And one of the reasons why it's taken is because the costs do go up. We were at Public Works today that there were lumber costs that went up eighteen percent this year. So, this is always a moving or a live revenue piece that happens no matter where you are, if you're an earner, if you're retired, no matter where you are. This is, this is something that happens to all budgets and it's another source that we need to stay on top of. And we may look healthy there, but overall, the budget has to have the revenue source in order to generate and provide more things to include our, covering our departments and the increases, covering our CIP and the needs that we have there that are greater than, greater than certainly our budget, that's another topic for another day, covering our investments from within our own properties, our own buildings, our community investments, our core values, our quality of life, these are all the things that this goes to. So, does the taxpayer get something for it? You bet they do. There is value, it's not hidden value, it's upfront. And it should be, it should be keeping up with us here in our community as it is in our nation. So, CPI is one of the revenue streams that we're always saying, where's our revenue streams at? This is one of them. It is nominal. I had one constituent call and he said, I don't think it's even going to, you know, hit me ten dollars based on what his own was. So, factor that in, I think it generates, is it two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars?
Two hundred and eighty-five, three seventy-nine.
Two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Now, we just voted for the mayor and threw back at him to come up with an additional two hundred and three thousand dollars in this budget. So, if we take the two hundred and eighty-five thousand, we're now approaching close to five hundred thousand dollars that we're going to nickel and dime our community in and out of, whether it be for public service, or public safety, or customer service, or investments, or HVACs, or anything else that happens in this. So, this is a valuable resource, it is one that we should be taking. It's only at one point seven, that's a pretty nominal increase in the CPI. And, and accept it and move on with this, because we're, if we dent this budget anymore, we're going to have a tremendous amount of loss. There's, we're going to create a level of failure and we don't want that either. We need to have balance, balance growth, balance quality. And I hope we keep that in mind as we tear apart CPI. Thank you for, for now.
Thank you. Pauline, on this, you, you mentioned it was, if I got the number right, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine?
Correct.
And so, what's the percentage of the CPI?
One point seven percent.
One point seven percent? And how much of the clawback or, how much CPI was available to take for 2019?
That two eighty-five, three seventy-nine, we have no, we have no longer, or we have no more clawback available to us at this time. We've left money on the table by not taking CPI before to the tune of about one point two million dollars each year. But, so, last year, we took the CPI, the year prior, it was a negative, so you couldn't, there was nothing to take. And then, for the 2016 budget, we also took the CPI for that. And so, it's a three-year clawback period, so that would be your three years.
Okay. So, in 2016, the CPI was taken by the city for that year?
Yes, and that was one point five percent or two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars.
No clawback at that time?
No, we have never done a clawback.
Okay. So, in 2017, there was a negative CPI, so there was nothing to take to increase. And then, in 2018, we took?
One percent or a hundred and sixty-one, four oh five.
And then, this year, it's proposed to take the one point seven percent.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Chair, we'd like to recognize Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pauline, I'm using numbers, let's see, I'm using the numbers that were given to us. This is the actual revenue received, that page, can you pull that up? On a, yes, on the total property tax? Thank you. Folks, what I'm primarily looking at is that sixteen million fifty-five, four ninety-four number, and comparing that with the mayor's proposed budget in the police department and the HR comes awfully close to that total dollar amount. There's a few thousand dollars difference, but, but primarily, that's what our property tax funds. Am I off track here, Pauline, so far? Correct me on this, this number, the sixteen oh fifty-five? That's primarily what we get for property tax collection.
That's what we actually collected in 2017, not what we requested. So, there may have been some back taxes, there may have been tax increment districts that came back on the, the tax rolls because they had been paid off. So, it's a variety, it is the property taxes received though, not just the maximum that we could request.
That's my understanding, yes. That's what we've totally brought in on our revenue side. So, I'm just kind of looking at this number here and comparing that with the, the mayor's budget of the police and HR, putting them together, it's a few, few dollars off separation there, but, but it's awfully close. That's essentially, that's all the property tax is pays for, the rest of it is coming out of the sales tax. And since our sales tax is coming in so flat, or even dangerously close to zero, that's what the rest of the city operates off of. And how do we bring that in? Plus, the other items that the mayor has presented in his budget proposal is the user fees. And so, I'm very concerned about if, if we don't fund these different departments properly, what are we giving up? For me, it's quality of life. And it's one of our cornerstones within our comprehensive plan. And so, it, so I just want to caution everyone here on the council about what are we giving up when we start cutting back? Is it everything going to go into the police department then? Or half of it goes to the police and half goes to the fire department? What are we going to do? Because that's primarily what we're relying upon is the, the property tax to fund just those two departments and, and all the rest of it's coming out of sales tax and user fees. So, it's just, just a word of caution, folks, to, to take a look at this budget in a larger picture of what we're going to be doing and how this affects the future. And if I can also address another comment that's been made earlier too, is that if we're going to run like a business, if we're going to run the city like a business, we have to do things a whole lot differently. And I'm not comfortable going that direction of running it like a business, because what, you take a look at Sears, what happened to Sears up there? Their board of directors decided, and we had no choice in what to say with it, they closed up the doors. Same thing with Herberters. And some other businesses that we lost here locally. Run like a business. And whereas we, as the city council members, we can address the concerns of our citizens almost instantly. If we take their phone calls, we'll, we'll be able to give them an answer. If not, we can look that answer up. Businesses do not do that. They don't provide that information to their, to their customers or clients. We do. And I think that's a positive role of taking the city government that we have. And it's still a small D, democracy, but it's one way we can respond to our citizens and apply what they wish. And if they, if they don't like what we're doing, they can vote us out of office. Whereas Sears and Herberters and the other business, Toys R Us, they, they just leave. And so, I'm just not comfortable with this concept of running city government like a business. Thank you. I yield.
Chair recognizes Alderman Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to point a couple of things out to Mr. Nordstrom, that, you know, a lot of us that do have service businesses, if we don't get back with our clients with their information, we go broke. So, you know, there are a lot of businesses out there that do have to service their clients. The city, the government isn't the only one that services people. Also, if you want to run it like a business, I couldn't run my business this way. I can't, I can't budget on things that are not going to be coming in, or I can't project that are coming in. I couldn't say, and I'm not going to go too deep into this because we already voted on the last one, but I couldn't say, well, I am going to initiate this fee and, you know, you're going to, you're going to pay it no matter what. The city can do that. I can't do that with my business. I have to give my customers what they want, when they want, or I go out of business. So, you know, saying that, that government gives something to the people that private industry can't, I think is being a little bit crappy to the private business owners up here. So, I just took a little offense to that. No, sorry about that.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Modric.
Thank you. I just want to remind us the numbers. So, our fixed numbers of revenue is property tax at twenty-seven percent, and our reliance is sales tax at forty-four percent. And that's, that's the number that is, we want to grow it, but we have to grow it if we buy local. It's the only way. It's the only way that we can grow that number. We have to make that commitment. The public listening has to make that commitment. It all needs to stay here, it needs to be built at home. But without having that, with that being said, we also need to take a look at the other sources of which we have granted. And I appreciate Pauline's statement in that taking it now is part of the three-year. This is the opportunity to take it, and we didn't have it before. We left some money on the table and it was unfortunate that that council didn't see that happen. I hope that this council is projecting forward, taking that one point seven percent and knowing that we hope to get that forty-four percent or more in sales tax, and, and let's, let's grow this city. That's what we want to do. We're sitting up here and we're working really hard to grow it. This is what it takes. It takes money sometimes to make money. We're not a profit. We are a, a government and we're here for the people. And unfortunately, there's a cost to that, but that's the job that we do. And I think that our departments, and I think that our city is running about the best they can on the numbers that we have. Let's make it solid and let's put that one point seven in there. This is not the time to take that out of our budget. And I would hope that you would accept this motion so we can move forward. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Alderman Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. And the first thing that comes to my mind is this is not forward-thinking, this is backward thinking. This is not how you grow. This is not how private business grows so that you get more of that revenue that I've already showed you, which is very good. It's not, you're hearing a lot of words that take away from these numbers. The question I would have if I were hearing some of the discussion is how is what they're saying refuting the revenues that this city sees? The question, or the answer to that, in my opinion, at least strongly based on the numbers, is that we just spend more than we're making and what we're making is very good. That's not how you grow your economy. That's not how you grow the pie larger. It's not how it happens. The economy, the federal economy has grown like it has because of the tax cuts that are being passed. People have more money in their pockets, they're better spenders of their own money than government will ever be. That, that is how you grow the pie larger, is by letting people decide what to do with their hard-earned money. And as Mr. Roberts said, no private business can go out and just say, you know what, you're a customer of mine, you're in my list of customers, you're going to have to just give me more money. That's what government does. Private business can't do that. They, we can't go, private business can't go out and start taking money from people who are forced to pay it in a form of a tax. And that's what this is. This is increasing property taxes. And it's purely because we won't budget on the good revenues that we get. And the CPI will continue to come forward every year with this type of talk, even though you can prove to them that all of the taxpayers, including all of you sitting out there, already pay a lot in taxes, absolutely do. It's right there in the numbers. It's the spending of the government that's a problem. The services, your critical services will not go anywhere. That's other part of the, the, the talk. Every year, this CPI comes up, the police, the fire, I mean, what are they going to do? I didn't hear any of that talk when we were talking about the two hundred and three thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars that we just said we were going to send back to the mayor, because that's money that gets, that's money that's going to end up in the general fund as well. We've already talked about how it's already generating more than it costs to deliver that service. That's general fund money as well. But did you hear any conversation about how, well, think about the police, ladies and gentlemen, think about the fire. I mean, what if they can't come to your house? It's almost like that's what they were trying to say. And I think that is a disservice, a huge disservice. If we're going to grow the pie, if we're going to grow the pie, you got to have the people who make the money decide how they're going to spend it. And we're doing just the opposite by taking more of your money through property taxes. When you pay off your mortgage, if you think you own your property, guess what? You do not own your property. Don't pay your taxes for a few years and you'll find out who really owns your property, even when your mortgage is paid in full. And so, that's how important this particular item is. This is a property tax increase and it's not needed, and that's demonstrated right here in the numbers that the city can provide to you and you can provide to your fellow citizens. I yield.
Chair recognizes Alderwoman Drew.
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Alderman Laurenti. We are doing well and I want to do better. I think just because we're doing well doesn't mean we can't go forward. I don't want to retreat on the progress that we've made as a city. And so, I'm going to support taking the CPI. I think that just, that we just erased two hundred thousand dollars from this budget was irresponsible and to make it five hundred thousand dollars would, would put some onus on the backs of people that I don't want to cut any further, because it usually goes to the culture and the arts of this community. And the things that I'm willing to cut are not the arts and culture. I think you'll be surprised what I'd be willing to cut to be able to leave those organizations alone. They've given enough already. And I thought it was an equitable budget that when we went into these discussions, I liked it. I thought everybody was kind of sharing the burden and it was really going to work out really well. So, I don't see any reason to not take the CPI. We have to go forward as a community and this is a very, we're asking a very small amount from, from our citizenry. And they reap the benefits of these decisions we make tonight. And I think that this is a way to go forward, it's not a way to go backward. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderwoman Drewry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I would like to thank Pauline for providing all this data for us to look at. You did a very nice job putting it together and I appreciate it because I know it takes time and effort on your part. And I know you don't work for the auditor's office, but do you know what the increase in assessments were in the prior year?
As far as the total evaluation?
Yeah.
You know, I could go back and figure that out off the top of my head, I do not know that.
Okay. Because I guess to my point is taxes do go up and it's not just what we take, but the assessments go up. You know, the value of my house goes up every year and so, I pay more taxes. No matter if we take CPI or not, I'm still going to pay more taxes because my assessments continue to go up and up. And I was just curious, and I apologize, I had a note last week to try to find that out ahead of time and then I kind of.
That's okay. I just want to point out though, if, if we didn't ask for any more money than what we asked for this year, plus the growth, and all three taxing entities did the same, but the valuation of your home went up, theoretically, what would happen then is your mill levy would actually go down and we would. then is your mill levy would actually go down. And we would probably collect about the same exact amount of tax from you, other than that, the growth part of it might have a little impact, but your mill levy should go down. You know, and I don't know. People think our taxes are high here, and I will tell you, I moved 30 miles down the road. My taxes, my city mill levy, was nearly three times that of Rapid City. I paid almost $9,000 on my house there, where here I pay $3.20,000 gladly. Conversation tonight has been talking about growing the pot, per se. CPI honestly isn't about growing the pot. CPI is providing services that we currently provide and covering the increased costs. What I have seen in my nearly 19 years of government, between Sturgis and Rapid City, is we try to be cognizant of how we're affecting our taxpayers, but in the same regard, we expect to maintain services with less, or on the backs of growth. So the growth part of your property taxes, that's what's for new annexations, new buildings, in addition to your house, in addition to a business. That's what's considered growth. Growth should pay for growth. CPI should pay for the increased cost of doing business.
Okay. Thank you much. I thank you for answering that question. And again, thank you for providing all the data. I yield.
And thank you, Pauline. And I'm glad you used the word theoretical, because I have tracked, ever since I got on city council, and Alderman Wright, Jerry Wright at the time, told me the same thing, that, you know, basically, if all the entities did not take a CPI, that if the assessments went up, the mill levies would go down. And I tracked it, and on my property, I live in North Rapid, and our assessments, I would imagine, in all the words they've been going up, they have been going up increasingly. And there's a little other calculation that really throws a monkey wrench into that whole theoretical thing. And that is called the equalization factor that the state does. So if you, if anybody in here thinks that they can predict what your taxes are gonna be, I have been trying to track it down, because by the time the equalization department of the county gets done setting assessed value, and then the taxing authorities set their mill levies or the request for taxation, which sets the mill levy, then you throw it all to the state, and the state does some magic eight-ball thing, and then that's how we get taxed. So I have yet to see my mill levy go down.
Well, I've put historical information up, and just even between 2016 payable 17 versus 2017 payable 18, it went from $3.20 to $3.196. So it went down minimally. I will admit that. But even going further, there are times between, so then it went from 320, almost 328, down to 320. So it has gone down on the city's portion. I know the county's mill levy has gone down some. But when you look at it collectively, sometimes the school mill levy goes up. So comparing these two years for owner occupied, we went down from 3.278 to 3.201, but the school went up from 8.891 to 9.014. County also went down a little bit. But your overall mill levy went up, and the difference is that school district.
But also, just to let you know, even those times where the city's mill levy went down, my assessed value went up high enough on my individual house that my taxes still went up. So this whole discussion on what's gonna cause, I mean, we can talk about the mill levy decrease, yep. But if my tax bill actually still goes up, my tax bill went up. And I'm not talking the school portion of it. I'm talking the city portion of it. So my taxes have gone up every year. I don't know if anybody else's has. Mine has. So, thank you. Chair would like to recognize Alderman Laurenti.
I'm just gonna make one last point, Chair. Thank you. And it kind of goes to some of the most recent comments, which is, which is what's said every time they want to raise property taxes, is that this is for increased costs, the city's increased costs. Even in the face, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep coming back to this, even in the face of the revenue growth increases, what they're trying to say is that somehow, this really good revenue growth doesn't cover the increased costs of government to do business. And you heard Alderwoman Scott talk about how she still has the same house. It's not demanding any new services, but the, that property tax has gone up tremendously. So has mine. And I live in the same house I've been in since 1996. It's not demanding any new services from the city, but I, my taxes are double from what they were when I bought it. I understand that. They need to go up, because the valuation's gone up. But it's not demanding any new services. Whereas all of the thousands of Rapid Cityans who are in the same boat as Alderwoman Scott and myself, who are spending more money here, because we've got, we've received raises at our jobs, hopefully, here and there, and we're spending that here. Where's all that going if that's not, somebody will say growth. Well, shouldn't growth pay for growth? We can't even tell you, this city cannot even tell you what the cost of growth is, and what the revenues are to cover it. Because oftentimes, we defer that revenue called tax increment financing. We have tons of money in tax increment financing that we've given to developers to do developments. So that money's not coming to the city in property tax. Instead, what we do is we approve all these TIFs, and then we say, well, we need to increase property taxes, because, well, that'll help offset it. I mean, they're not saying that, but obviously, that's one of the problems. We've deferred all of that property tax in TIFs, and now we say, we need the money to cover the increased costs. Again, I'm gonna come back to it, because ad nauseam, because you keep hearing all these other things, trying to draw you away from the revenues that this city sees. That's the reality. And what it comes down to is government's refusal to make priorities, just like all of us have to do. If you don't get the increase that you expected in your job, what do you have to do? You have to make priorities. You have to cut back somewhere. Government doesn't feel like they have to. In fact, they say that. They say what you just heard. Well, we do this because it's to cover increased costs. Well, no, you don't have to do that to increase costs, given the revenues you get. You just need to make better priorities. You need to not spend money somewhere that you would hope to spend, just like every family in Rapid City does. What is it with government? They think, well, we can take it. So that's what we're gonna do. Families can't do that. That's the reality. I'm not gonna support the CPI. I yield.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alderman Nordstrom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to also remind the folks on the expense side of it, of the, I'm just trying to pull up the mayor's last year's budget, and some of the things that he said that we had to do for our cost increases for, for our budget. And I just want to remind, just a couple of factors on this budget. From the 2018 budget, we added more staff to the HR department. For me, that's, that's a service that we provide to the employees, and, and also, these, these folks in HR also reach out to the community as well. Another factor that I feel is very, very important, is that we've added another person in engineering to do more onsite inspections. So again, it comes back to the quality and assurance that we have a good product out there within the city. I can see the difference in the streets that are built from a few years back to what we are producing right now. The difference in the quality of the streets are dramatically different. That's just a few examples of what we've had to do to justify some of these things that were growing within our budget. And for me, it's, we, the community deserves these things. So, and if there's some other things in there that I'm forgetting, I apologize. But there's so many other things in here that justify, for me, the comprehensive plan says the quality of life, and that's what this is all about. Forget about all this other diversion or distraction things about good revenue. Well, cost of living is still going up for everybody. And when we required, we're, we're required to hire more staff, such as the HR, and to get that quality up, and also in our streets, I'm gonna support that. So that's, that's a couple of other reasons why I'm gonna support the CPI. Thank you.
Thank you. I currently have no one in the queue. The motion on the floor is to retain the CPI as presented in 2019 budget. And it was seconded in. I have no other ones in the queue. Heidi, we're just gonna go to a roll call vote. Please.
Armstrong.
Yes, the motion on the floor is to retain the CPI in the 2019 budget as presented by the mayor. And I believe Alderwoman Armstrong, you're called to vote first.
Armstrong. Laurenti. Drury. Roberts. Scott. Drew. Nordstrom. Modrick. Solomon. Motion passes five to four.
Thank you. So our next item on the agenda for discussion is basically a catch-all, or is there any other further discussion concerning the 2019 budget as presented by the mayor, by the city council members before us tonight? I'll hear from you now. I don't see anything. The next thing is, is, does any council member seated up here believe that we need to hold a third budget hearing for tomorrow night, or shall we cancel tomorrow night's budget hearing? I've got a motion by Drury to cancel tomorrow night's budget hearing, as it is no longer needed. I've got a second by Drew. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we adjourn, I want to thank everyone who participated. I want to thank staff. I want to thank the mayor, and I want to thank the city council members. I believe this was a great discussion. I want to thank everybody for their time. I know it was a late night tonight. So I will entertain that motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Alderwoman Drury?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? I've got a second by Laurenti. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.